Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Tuesday, January the 21st, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board members. The next order of business is reading of minutes. Before you have presented the minutes from the meeting dated Monday, December the 16th, 2013, floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
If there's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve as presented.
Make said motion.
And I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. There's no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business, we have two orders of business this evening. First is a billing contract, and I think I'll defer to the clerk for explanation, and then I'll call the sanitation clerk up for comments as well. Dan?
Okay. Actually, what we're proposing to do is go with Keystone, who is our software provider that we use at the present time. The reasoning behind this is postage has gone up where we will be going to full price for postage on our billing if we don't do this because of something they require, which is a ten-digit number that they have to have on every bill that goes out. So, anyway, we've been researching this for about the last 60 days or so, and Linda has actually found out by the time we buy the paper for the bills, the toner, the time involved, everything involved, it will actually save the city money in going to this program. And they print all the bills, they mail them, and I think there's a copy of the bill in your packet, and I'll just let Linda go on from there because she's done a good job researching this.
The reasoning this started is because the post office is no longer going to recognize our CAS certification, which is that, it looks like a UPC symbol on the bottom of your bill, which sorts it by zip code and everything, and that's why we get the cut rate for postage. So, our software people proposed to use, it's called voicemail for bills, and there's a one-time setup fee of $850. There's an annual fee of $900 a year. The postage, they get a cut rate. There's 19 cents for each bill added to the postage. They will provide a return envelope. They do all the printing, they mail them out. When I did research on what it costs, right now for us, using the way we do it now, because each one of those blank bill forms is a dollar a page. So that's a big chunk of it. But I added up the postage, what it costs for the bill forms, they charge shipping to send those blank bill forms to us, the toner. It costs us around $83,000 a year. And that's not including the time that it takes and all that. When I did the research for the voicemail, it's going to cost us around $32,000 a year. That's a savings of almost $50,000 right there. Plus, when I do the bills now, when I print them, it takes me a full nine hours, and I have to walk back and forth about every 15, 20 minutes to refill and all that, and put the bills in the tray. I just think this is a really good proposition, especially since it's going to save us so much money. And I like the fact that they print them, they provide a return envelope, maybe people won't complain so much about the, you know, the glue not sticking on the return envelope we have now. There is a copy, the last sheet, shows an example of what the bill would look like, and it looks like you would tear off the top and return with your payment in the envelope, just like other utility bills. So I would like for this to be taken into consideration, and I hope we can decide to do it. If so, it would only, it could probably be implemented within about two months, so it would only cost us the full price for postage for a couple of months, so.
Linda, also, I know our machinery to do this is getting old, and the cost of that machinery is very, very expensive.
Yeah, the folder sealer is about, what, eight years old, nine years old? We pretty much every month have to call them out to maintenance it. When I start folding and sealing it, they'll get stuck and they won't be folding right, and so they have to come out. And a new one, just for that machine, is about $12,000. So, it will save on the wear and tear on that. It's still perfectly good to fold and seal the checks that we do, because we don't do as many checks as bills. Bills monthly is around 4,700 individual bills that we do, so.
All right, questions from Board members?
Well, if there was going to be a savings of $50,000, I'm not going to buck it. Will this be, can this be like on a trial basis, or once you...
You know, I didn't ask that, but I would imagine we could do it for a year and see, because there is that one-time setup fee, and then that $900 annual fee. And that's including, I included all those charges when I calculated the savings, so. But I would think, you know, we could do it for a year and see how it works.
And we contacted other communities that use this, and we never had any that had an issue with it, so.
No.
You know, I just think it's a win-win for the city.
Any questions from Board members?
If we had to add anything onto the bill?
Yes, we can. If we end up going with the stormwater, it can be added on there. We could put memos on there as far as, you know, whatever we wanted it to say. And also, this one here shows what they previously paid.
Yeah, we're going to have on there showing their last payment, which the bills now don't show the payments at all, which I don't think is right. I want to see my payment on there, you know, reflected. But I believe we're starting in the next month or two, we're going to put the stormwater on there with a zero-dollar amount, just to get people's attention. Maybe they'll start asking questions, we can kind of ease them into, you know, that stormwater charge that's going to be going on their bills. Plus, on these new bills, there's more space down here to put like an explanation, or if we, if the mayor wants an announcement made, or the Clerk Treasurer wants an announcement, there's more room to put something like that on there.
How many man-hours of time do you think it'll save us?
Pardon me?
Man-hours? How much, how much man-hours will it save us?
Well, it takes nine hours to print the bills. And that's, like I said, I'm walking back and forth and everything. I could be doing a lot of other things in that nine hours, so.
And then at the same time, we have street department people come over, and they actually take them to the post office, and what, there's at least two of them normally when they...
And sometimes they grumble. No, they don't.
No.
They're very nice about it.
But, you know, so we're pulling them off a task they could be doing too. So, you know, I'd say 12 hours anyway, minimum.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have none.
I'll ask for a motion from the Board to approve entering into an agreement with Boys concerning Beach Grove Sewage Works billing.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Also, Board, I'll need a motion to allow the Clerk to enter into an agreement on behalf of the Board of Works.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Sanitary sewage collection agreement with M.D. Westler. Brent?
Good evening. Thank you and good evening. I would like to present to the Board for their consideration Amendment Number Nine to the Agreement dating back to 2005 for Providing On-Call Sanitary Services. We've actually been doing this work, not me personally, but the company has since 1983, where we assist the City of Beach Grove with the operation, maintenance, and planning of their sanitary collection system. This work specifically is for maintaining the flow meters, calibrating them, putting together an annual flow report, coordinating with potential connections, okay? A good example would be Teachers Credit Union working with them to get them to connect to the system there under Emerson Avenue, coordinating with Citizens Energy Group on issues that may occur in the fringe there between the Beach Grove District and Citizens Energy Group District. So it's basically whatever we can help you out with, whatever you need help with on the sanitary collection system side. The compensation would be for $20,000, that's what it was last year and the year before that, and we actually had a couple thousand dollars left over that we were able to use this month for preparing the annual report that covers last year. So, be happy to entertain any questions you have. Again, this is an amendment. The only thing it's changing for the original agreement dating back to 2005 is just simply providing for these services in 2014, not to exceed $20,000 on a time and materials basis.
Floor is open for questions?
I have none.
So, any new development, you would review the sanitary sewers?
Yes.
And stormwater sewers?
This is just for the sanitary. Mary will actually have something for the storm sewer work. So, you know, someone calls up and says, hey, I'm looking at developing this area, or I've got problems and I'd like to connect to the sanitary system. We help them determine where they should connect, help them facilitate getting the paperwork in place, and also doing the plan review to make sure what they plan on putting in is per the city standards, and that it's not going to leak or fall apart.
Any further questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Amendment Number Nine to the Agreement between the Board of Sanitation for the City of Beach Grove and Westler Engineering for 2014 Engineering Services.
Make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Appreciate it very much.
We will double back to item number four. I wanted to do that to relieve them and to, fact that we have two dockets tonight, Board. The first docket that we're going to approve is dated January the 6th, 2014. Payable vouchers consisting of three pages in the amount of $355,527.64. The floor is open for questions.
I see on the last page, on Westler Engineering, the top for quite a large amount, $16,628. Is that on the project, is that the final phase?
Brett?
Are you on page three?
Brett's not here.
I'm going to have to look at it, but I'm assuming that's for stormwater rains, and that's...
That's the first phase of the stormwater utility.
Okay.
The measurements, everything like that, yeah.
Okay.
I reviewed the docket on January the 7th and talked to Dan on a few questions that I had, and I'm good. Thank you.
I'd like to make a statement. I sent out information to the entire Board just to let them know. I had talked to State Board of Accounts, and ordinarily, we do not pay bills without Board approval. I sent this out to them, and because some of them, the timeframe they were in and so forth, I got permission from State Board of Accounts under emergency situation that I could do that. So I'm not, if you see the check out there that's going to be online, I'm not just arbitrarily paying these bills without permission from the Board, but at the same time, they needed to be paid. Their stance on it was, it's common sense, we need to get them taken care of, and so that's what was done.
And emergency was the snow that we had on the fifth and sixth.
Yes.
Right. It's understandable.
If there are no other questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims for January the 6th, 2014, in the amount of $355,527.64.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Board, you have a second docket of claims dated January the 21st, 2014. You have payable vouchers of six pages in the amount of $135,879.36. Floor is open for questions.
I have one question on page one. Citizen Energy Group sewage IDW wastewater for $49,660.
Okay, what that is, is our portion that we pay for them to do projects in the city, like the project they're doing down at Southport and 37, that all falls underneath that claim. But anyway, the previous year, we never got billed the entire year for that. So part of this amount was for the previous year. We paid everything to deplete that account down to nothing, and then this would have been a portion of this year, plus whatever the remainder was the previous year.
At Southport and 37?
Yeah, they're, I don't know what that's called down there, but...
All of our wastewater that we generate...
Oh, goes there.
Travels to there.
Gotcha, okay.
Then the cities agreed to pay their portion of the updates to that treatment facility.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have none, ma'am.
I had one other one. Page five, Fazoli's for $2,000 sewage refund?
That was a spaghetti special.
We ain't good over this.
It was in memory.
No, what actually...
I knew it was coming, right?
What actually happened on that was when Citizens Energy sent us the readings, there was several commercial properties that were misread, and Fazoli's went ahead and just paid the bill for what it was. So we refunded them $2,000, and then we still had probably enough for two more payments that they would owe. So that's what they requested. We said we can do it as a credit, or we can issue you a check, and so they chose for us to issue them a check.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated January the 21st, 2014, in the amount of $135,879.36.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. That concludes all business for the Board of Sanitation for this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none. I want to say thank you to Brad and, excuse me, all the guys. Hard work out there. It's been tough, and it looks like we're going to have another wave coming in. But one question, though, how's our salt coming, supply?
Not as good as I would like for it to be. We've got a little bit left, but it's dwindling fast.
All right.
And also, thank you to Linda for checking into that billing process. It's nice to save the city some money when we can, and man-hours. So, thanks, Linda.
There's no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:21 PM. We will convene the Board of Works and Safety in 10 minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting. In lieu of a roll call, I'll ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board members. Before you is presented minutes from the previous meeting dated Monday, December the 16th, 2013. This time, the floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
If there's no corrections, comments, or questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We will bypass approval of claims, temporarily go to unfinished business, which there is none tonight, move to new business. At this time, there's four items. We will proceed with bid opening for Skidsteer. We had one bid submitted, and at this time, I'll ask Sandy to open the bid, please.
And it is taped very good. And the bid is from MH Equipment Company, 5859 West Raymond Street, Indianapolis, and the bid amount is $73,998.23.
What we will do now is we will take it under advisement. I will proceed with the Public Works Director, and we'll have our city attorney look at it, and then at our next meeting on February the 3rd, we will announce whether we accept the bid or not. So thank you for submitting your bid. Next order of business is a letter for compliance position hiring request, and I'll ask the Clerk to read the letter into the record.
Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board that the city hire a compliance officer. This is a position that was added into the 2014 budget and salary ordinance. This position will function under the supervision of both the Director of Public Works and Fire Chief. The compliance officer will perform inspections for grass violations, trash violations, fire code violations, et cetera. The position will work in coordination with the Marion County Health Department to resolve issues with properties that are in non-compliance with current city ordinances. The salary for this position will be no more than $15 per hour and no more than $25,000 per year. There is money in the 2014 budget to fund this position. Thank you for your consideration at this time. Respectfully, Brad Merriweather, Director of Public Works.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
I am excited about this. Beach Grove really needs a compliance officer. Long time needed.
Yes, that's the most complaints I get phone calls on.
I'd really like to see this et cetera spelled out a little more, more than just grass violation, trash violations, and fire code. I mean, I'm not asking to see that, I'm just, I'm just really excited about this position to get Beach Grove cleaned up a little bit.
And information for the Board, when this was designed, it was designed, it's a part-time position with no benefits other than pay, and it was designed that more than one person can do it. So theoretically, the Fire Chief and the Public Works Director could hire two or three people to do this job. The parameters are, they have to make $15,000, or $15 an hour, and the total thing can't be over $25,000 for the year.
Per person? Or for the entire position?
For the entire thing. So, those are the parameters that we would work under. But anyway, we have to get approval first to even start the process. So is there any other questions or comments?
So, like, does this person have to have specific qualifications or experience background to do this type of work? Or is it something that you can train or guide?
Rob and I both wrote a job description for it, so the et cetera is spelled out. Mine's a couple pages, I think it is a couple pages, and we go through responsibilities, requirements, skills, knowledge, things like that. We make that available to you if you'd like.
I would like to see it. Thank you.
The fire inspector would have to be certified by the state. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to allow the Fire Chief and the Public Works Director to hire compliance officer or officers for the purpose of doing inspections.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business, Board, is the local public agency consulting contract between the City of Beach Grove and United Consulting Engineers for the Beach Grove Sign Replacement Program. And I think I'll preface this by, Brad, if you could come up real quick and just very briefly describe what we're about to do here, or what this program is, then I'll call Bill and Brian up.
And this is the sign replacement?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we received a federal grant, I believe it was 9010, to do a sign replacement program for the City of Beach Grove. And basically, what it does is it takes all regulatory signs, speed limits, stop signs, and named signs for the streets, and allows us to replace all those that don't meet the current reflectivity standards, which I would say about 80 to 90 percent of ours do not. Most of them are old. We kind of replace signs as we can afford to and as we have complaints, whether something's fallen down or been graffiti beyond cleaning, or if it just looks so bad that we notice it and we replace it. But this will allow us to kind of do a citywide sweep and replace most of the signs that we have to meet the current federal guidelines. It's a great thing. We were really lucky to get it. I don't think at the time when we got it, I realized how much money we got, but I know a lot of places got half to less than half of what we received, which was in the neighborhood of $680,000 or $690,000. So...
There are certain dates when they all have to be replaced by?
As far as the federal program, they keep moving it around. I mean, they come out with those things, and I think they try to give people some leniency because it's really almost not doable unless you get some help, which is obviously why this money's available. They know that most people on their budget don't have the ability to go out and spend five or six or $700,000 to replace all the signs in their city. And hardly anyone, I think, unless you've done a new project within the last year or two, probably meets those new standards. So it's not anything that's in effect yet. This will put us in really good shape once we get this done. And I know we have this contract now to go ahead and proceed. Everything is kind of waiting on that, and then once we get that, we can actually start to... And then, once we get that, we can actually start to do some of the work and the inventory and things like that, that we need to do to see where we need to replace signs and how many we're gonna need, which, like I said, is gonna be almost everything, other than maybe Main Street and the roundabout, things that are relatively new.
And this, once you get this done, will this hopefully have money left for an inventory, for damage, or?
Part of the money will go to creating an inventory of the signs, real similar to what we did probably with the totes. When they put together that tote inventory, this will be something similar, where we will know what signs we have, what signs what got replaced. So, we'll now have a date for all these signs that we know are new, and that will help us going forward.
I think, very briefly, how did, did United Consulting get picked over? How did they end up getting this?
Yeah, when you have something like this, basically, you put out for a request for proposals, and it's kind of like a bid. Everybody has the ability to put in a request or a proposal. So, everybody puts in a packet that gets reviewed by a team of people, including myself, Phil Gerganis, Tom Hannan. We look that over and score it. And the scoring sheet, it basically asks you a number of questions and assigns a point value. And throughout that, you then narrow down who is the top firm for the project. So, that's how United scored the highest. I think we had seven proposals. So, there's quite a few people that put in for it. I know these, these jobs, I don't always get that many. I don't, I think that was as many as I got for Main Street. So, for a job this size, that was quite a few proposals to get in.
And who did it for Main Street?
Who did the?
The work?
Crossroads ended up getting that.
I'm just, I'm just showing the fairness here.
Yeah. And we have a team of people, so that you're, it's a cumulative score. It's not one person that's, you know, assigning the score, which is really what we wanted to move towards. And in the past, there's been situations where it would be only one person. And sometimes, these things are a little subjective, so it's nice to have, you know, multiple inputs on something like this. And some of the questions are on past performance. Some of the questions go back to projects they've done in the past and how they were scored. So, obviously, they have a very good history and have received good scores in the past from other people. So, then they get a good credit versus someone else that maybe didn't have the best past scores. That would maybe hurt you. So, it takes into consideration a lot of things. It's not just, do you like this person or not?
And I think the last time that the city did this was through United as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that was back in the 70s, I believe, early 70s, maybe. And they did the same thing. So, we're really excited to get it. Like I said, without it, this would be a daunting task to try to meet those regulations. So, this is really helpful.
Well done, Brad.
Thanks.
Bill or Brian, you want to come up and kind of explain this for us?
I am Brian Pearson with United Consulting. As Brad said, $685,000, just to throw some numbers out there, is the amount of money that was awarded for the total project. That includes the professional services, the design, the construction, or the installation of the signs that are gonna be replaced, as well as construction inspection. So, the agreement that we've put together and that's in front of you is for design services, totaling $94,000. With the 9010 split that Brad mentioned, that ends up being a local cost of $9,400. And the federal cost that gets picked up through the funding that was acquired is $84,600. The initial professional services we provide are basically broken into two, two parts. The first half is the inventory that you were asking about, Ed. That's, that's something we're gonna do upfront. We're gonna go inventory all the existing signs. We're gonna measure how tall they are, how far from the street they are, their reflectivity, you know, how you give a visual test of if you can see them or not. All that gets tabulated into a big spreadsheet, all for you guys' records to keep. And that also leads us into the next phase of our design, which is determining which signs get replaced and putting a priority order on those signs. So, you know, the ones that are really, really bad get replaced first, and money-wise, you keep doing it until it runs out. But as Brad mentioned, there's a good amount of money in there, so there's a good chance that a fair amount of signs in the city are gonna get replaced with this project.
I have a question. Besides this, how about the quality of the signs, the gauge, the thickness? I've noticed some of the, some of the signs, it seems like are...
As far as the actual sign, the metal, the sign itself?
Yeah.
As, I would say, as long as that sign is holding up visually, you know, it's not showing signs of wear or bending, or the reflective material's not coming off of it, that probably would not alone be a factor for replacement. It, it's more of the, the visual aspect of the sign. Can you read it? Of course, if there's, there's something going on with that sign and the metal is bending, or it's obviously got some other stress loads on it that's not working for that sign, or the post itself is not sturdy enough to hold up that sign, that would be a candidate for replacement.
Any other questions?
I have none.
I want to defer to the clerk for a minute because when the budget was being put together, I wanted to talk about how the money was set aside for these projects.
Well, when we first did this, I think, and it's been a while back, but I think we budgeted $60,000 because the 10% would have been 68.5 or something like that.
Right, yep.
And at that time, I believe Brad said that all the street signs in the city would not be replaced. So, we figured that $60,000 would be a comfortable number to get us through. So, I guess my question would be, without looking at these, you don't know where we're gonna be at right at the moment ballpark-wise, or, I mean, are we in the money at $60,000 that we've got budgeted? That would be amount of $600,000 at the 9010.
To replace all the street name signs?
Yes.
And things like that?
Yeah.
We've, we've estimated approximately 900 signs throughout the city. And with a construction budget of $525,000, honestly, I'm not sure if that, how, what percentage of signs that replaces. Could be 70 to 80%. And the inventory will allow us to kind of prioritize those, but there are other things that we can do as far as, you know, if the street name signs are a priority, those can be, you know, included in the construction plans that we put together as a higher priority.
Now, does this include the poles too? Will all the poles be replaced?
Yep.
Or just the signs?
Yes.
Okay. And if need be, I mean, we're trying to figure out where we're gonna go with this money, how much extra we might have, if we need to pull money from somewhere else to raise that up to the...
If you wanted to replace a larger number of signs or something in the money that was available?
Yeah, if there's 9010, we want to do the entire project. But we just want to make sure before we deplete our funds somewhere, that we've got money to make sure we're able to do this project and fold.
Mm-hmm. Well, after the inventory is complete, and we get the, a true number of signs that we're dealing with here, and, you know, the sizes and shapes of those that would, that need to be replaced, we can, we'll be able to provide a better construction cost estimate to replace all the signs in the city. I mean, you'll know the total amount that it could cost versus the amount that you have available under this project to fund.
Okay. And that's what we're looking at because we're looking maybe six months down the road, you know, can we use this money for paving or sidewalks, whatever?
Right.
So, we need to make sure that we hold back enough money to fulfill this, you know, entire amount.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just specifically under this project, you'll have this amount of guaranteed local funding, but there could be more funding to it if, if you so desire, or those funds could be for, for other projects.
Any other questions from Board members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consulting contract between United Consulting and the City of Beach Grove, and the amount shall not exceed $94,000.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I vote aye as well, and the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, Bill Hall with United Consulting, and I've been working with the city on various projects since about 1980. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you for this opportunity to do this project with the city. So, thank you very much.
You are welcome, Bill. Your company is very, there's some excellent companies out there, and yours is one of them. So, I thank you. Thank you, Board. Next, 2014 Stormwater Professional Services, Wesler, Mary from Wesler. Good evening, Mary.
Yes, as you mentioned, we have a on-call contract that is, there's an amendment for your consideration. And it is for the 2014 services related to stormwater. And just a quick summary of some of the things that we do under that contract. The primary function is for the MS-4 permit, which is the regulatory requirement for pollution prevention. There's a lot of tasks and activities that go on with that permit with annual reporting and site inspections and education and illicit discharge detection and things like that. And we just help to, to help follow some of those tasks throughout the year, make sure they're being completed, and help coordinate with the regulatory agency when it's necessary. We also, aside from permitting, we follow up on drainage complaints. Whenever there are drainage complaints in the city, we follow up on those and write up reports so that the city's aware of potential solutions to repair some of those drainage complaints. And then, you know, anything else on-call that might come up, there's some available budget to, to get some of those unforeseen issues that might come up throughout the year. Any questions?
And you said this is, this is reoccurring from previous years?
Yes, I think it's a, it's an Amendment 5 or Amendment 6.
Four.
Oh, four, thank you. Amendment four.
Okay, if there's not any questions or comments from Board members, I'll ask for a motion to approve Amendment Number Four to the Agreement between the City of Beach Grove and Wesler Engineering for Stormwater Professional Services for 2014, not to exceed $15,000.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, thank you, Mary. That concludes new business. We'll revert back to Number Four, Approval of Claims. The first docket of claims dated January 6, 2014. There's payable vouchers of 27 pages in the amount of $2,251,546.52. The floor is open for questions or comments.
Dana and I spoke about these during the emergency on January 7, and he answered all my questions.
And I have none.
I want to point out on page 20, there's one claim that we paid to the Bank of New York, and it was for the tax anticipation warrant. The principal payment for 2013 was $1,236,607. So, that was over half of the corporation claims for this period. And that's, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. The interest on that was $9,635.23 also, because it's broken down into principal and interest. And that was paid off on December 26, wire transfer.
So, if there's not any questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claim for January 6, 2014. In the amount of $2,251,546.52.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. For the next corporate claims, we review is dated January 21, 2014. Payable vouchers of 23 pages in the amount of $761,933.56. The floor is open for questions.
Well, I do have a question, but it's more on the lines of, I don't know what page, page 22, about KIP toys. We got, I think it was evidently the police, but they bought something for the kids, I believe.
Right. In the amount of $157. This is handcuffs, I think, that they pass out at the Fall Festival or whatever.
Okay.
But yes, that's what that was for.
I have a question on page 18. Indianapolis Planning.
Okay.
LRS Street and Alley invoiced for $4,642. The very last one, Dan.
Okay.
Brad, do you know what this one's for? It's a...
That's not for the GPS and street guys, is it?
That I will have to actually check on because off the top of my head, I don't know what it's for either. And I can let you know what that's for. I'll find out tomorrow and email you.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Got lots of ice melt, don't we? I have no further questions.
Ed?
Ed, I have none.
If there's no questions or comments, ask for a motion to approve the January 21, 2014 corporate claims in the amount of $761,933.56.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. That concludes all of our new business. Comments from Board members?
Well, thanks for everyone coming out. This evening is pretty cold and snowy out there, so be safe.
I have none. Thank you.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
The Board of Works meeting is adjourned at 6:54 PM. We will meet again on Monday, February 3, 6:00 PM in the same chambers. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our common council meeting for Tuesday, January 21, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each council member to introduce himself, beginning on my far right.
Dave Mobley, City Council Large.
John Jennings, District 4.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District 3.
Ed Bell, District 7.
Abby Coats, Council Large.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council members. At this time, we'll do a special presentation from Lance Ratliff. Lance is with the Interlocal Association. Lance, come to the podium, please.
Good evening, council members. My name again is Lance Ratliff. I'm the Executive Director for Interlocal Association. And I'm here this evening to give you a little background on the organization and what it does. And we're here this evening asking for your continued support of the organization. So... So with that, Interlocal is an intergovernmental entity. You have a packet of materials. I think the green sheet gives you a lot of the details. We've been around since 1973. The organization was formed by the mayors of several small cities here in central Indiana. Mayor Elton Geshweiler was one of the founding members of the group back in the '70s. The purpose of the organization is to provide planning and administrative support for various community development programs, including workforce development. We have, for the last 40-some years, been very active in working with the regional workforce boards. We currently have contracts to oversee the Work One offices throughout the Donut Counties within this region. You have a packet in your folder or a sheet in your folder that talks about the Work One offices, some of the things they do. As I mentioned, we have been around for several years. When the organization was formed, it was set up on the basis that every five years, each of the member cities would take a look at the organization, what it's doing, has it been accountable and so forth, and determine whether or not they wanted to continue to participate with the group. I would mention that we have an annual CPA audit. We do carry liability insurance. We are bonded for employee fidelity. And I think most importantly, over the last many years, we've spent $122 million in federal workforce training money without any disallowed costs. None of those funds have ever been determined to be used improperly. We've maintained good performance with the programs in terms of serving people, enrolling them, placing them in jobs, and helping them with their training. We have been involved, as I mentioned, for several years here in central Indiana, working with the various workforce boards. We coordinate with all the surrounding areas as well, Indianapolis, Marion County, and the next ring of counties adjacent to the so-called Donut Counties. The information in your packet, I think, shows you how many customers we have. We get about 50,000 people that visit at least one time, or at least once a month, over the course of a year within our seven offices. Of those, we have about 1,100 people who've been enrolled this year in specific programs to help them find jobs, and we've placed over 70% of those people. So we're meeting our standards as prescribed by the Department of Labor and the State of Indiana. And that's kind of a quick overview of the organization. Are there any specific questions about the organization?
Okay, if not, hopefully that gives you a good overview, and you have some reference
materials in your folder. So thank you for your time, and appreciate your support over the years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lance, thank you. We have a resolution under new business that the council will entertain and hear, and then, should they approve it, I'll, I'll send it back to you.
Okay.
All right.
In that case, we'll leave and let you continue with your other business. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lance. Council members, you have the, been presented minutes from the previous meeting dated Monday, December the 2nd, 2013. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I personally have read and understand all of the meeting minutes for the December 2nd, 2013 meeting, and I motion we accept them as written.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Petitions or comments by citizens? No one has signed up this evening to speak, so we will move over to reports from committees, boards, and commissions. I sent an email out this afternoon to the Greenscape RDC and the Public Safety Committee asking them to submit their report via email to the council, should they have a report so we can move with the agenda as being as large as it is. So I did, I don't know if you have a report this evening or not.
Yes, I do.
I do want to hear a financial report from the city, so we'll go there, and then we'll move to the Mayor's Liaison.
Okay. Just before I get started here, I just want everybody to know, as of about 5:30 this evening, I finished the financial data for last year. Everything is in the Gateway right at the moment that we have at the present time, but everything for last year is done right at the present time. We just finished today. We worked all day yesterday on it. So anyway, I want to go on to this. Today, I got some good news of additional revenue the city will be receiving. There is funding available to supplement the loss of income for Medicaid patients using the ambulance service. The city has not applied for this, but the good news is we have until January 31st to submit our application for the years 2011 and 2012, and until June to submit for 2013. This additional revenue and an improvement in city finances should allow me to add three new paramedics to the budget for 2015. The month of December was a busy month as we began preparation for the year-end. 2013 year-end was unusual as there were changes in employees' pay, positions, health and dental insurances that had to be recorded before the first paychecks of the year. Our office has been very busy updating and correcting spreadsheets for all of these. Debbie has taken on the task of reviewing each employee's pay and deductions, comparing it to the salary ordinance, insurance enrollment forms, insurance bills, and health savings accounts. Errors have been found, and I take full responsibility for them, and I apologize. But with that being said, in accordance with state statute, we have to collect the monies. Debbie has done a good job at reviewing, correcting, and updating the employees' payroll, and I have a great deal of confidence that employees will see an improvement with accuracy and a lot less errors. Tonight, you will be asked to amend the salary ordinance. The contract for the Police Department, which was approved by the Board of Works, included a pay raise for the positions of captain and sergeant, but the council needs to approve those through an amendment. Also, in December of 2011, a position of detective manager was added to the Police Department, and a position pay increase was added. That detective has received the pay increase since January of 2012, so the council needs to pass an amendment to approve this position and make it retroactive back to January of 2012. If this council chooses not to approve the new position, then pay raises that detectives would be required to pay back the money to the city. We also completed the 100R on the Gateway and sent an electronic and paper copy to the Marion County Treasurer, as is required by law. We paid off the 2013 Tax Anticipation Warrant on December 26, 2013. The amount of that was $1,246,242.23. We also received our property tax money, and I have passed out copies of the Form 22 to all of you. The 2014 Tax Anticipation Warrant will not be finalized until January 31st, so I still don't have an interest rate. The amount borrowed was $2,61,133. Last year, the total amount borrowed was $2,294,522. This represents a reduction of over $260,000 from the 2013 Tax Anticipation Warrant. We are in the process of completing the information on the Gateway. Federal grants have to be reported on the Gateway, and we are waiting to receive information from the Police Department regarding their grants to complete the Gateway. There is a new required report on the Gateway this year, which is OPEB Report, short for Other Post-Employment Benefits. It is quite extensive with the information that is required. Jeff Peters' office and Christian Duncan are assisting us. We have already created six spreadsheets that we have sent to Jeff Peters, and there are many more to create and send. This report has to be filed before February 1st, 2014. The report contains data that the state is collecting on benefit package offered to employees and retirees, including dental, health, life, and vision insurance. Cities just began reporting on the Gateway in 2012, and now it includes eight different applications, which include the budget, the annual report, and the 100R, to name a few. I have highlighted some of the changes below. In the, the State Board of Accounts changes. We have to report all people employed by the unit for the previous year. This includes part-time, temporary, and seasonal employees. Report total compensation paid. In the past, the hard copy 100R indicated that you should list people that were currently employed by the unit in January when the report was prepared. Compensation was reported as an amount on a per-unit basis, for example, $10 per hour or $500 per week. Actual reporting was very inconsistent. Some units reported all people employed during the year and their total compensation for the year. In addition, compensation on a per-unit basis leaves out some categories of compensation, such as overtime pay. Per-unit reporting can also make it difficult to compare compensation between different employees and units. The city website continues to be successful and is provided at no charge to the taxpayers. A document center has been added under government where minutes, reports, bank statements, and more can now be accessed in this one easy location. We continue to have wonderful volunteers that assist with updating and posting. Their creativity, hard work, and dedication never ceases to amaze me. Please, if you have any community events that you would like posted, email those to me at dan.mcmillan@beachgrove.com. We try to get those posted the same day. There's financial reports, city debt schedules, bank statements, and more are all available online at www.beachgrove.com. The bank balances are listed below here for the council to see, and they're online for anyone in the public that would like to look at them. As always, my door is always open. If you have any questions, thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Questions or comments? If none, we'll move to the youth council. I advise the council that, beginning in February, Mr. Cox is going to be providing students to update the council on activities and what's going on at the school and in the city, and then that will evolve into the ordinance that this council passed previously. Mayor's Liaison Report, I don't see the Mayor's Liaison. I'm not sure. I'll have to get ahold of her again. We'll move to unfinished business, carried over from the previous meetings. General Ordinance Number 20, 2013, the amendment for the salary ordinance. And I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record place. Or the, or the amendment, I'm sorry.
General Ordinance Number 20, 2013, amendment. Whereas the Chief of the Beach Grove Police Department determines who supervises detectives and who is assigned to work both middle and late shifts, and whereas the city has compensated police officers who work both middle and late shifts with differential pay at a rate of 50 cents per hour worked, and whereas the chief promotes officers and they receive position pay depending upon their promoted position, and whereas the payment for shift differential and detective supervision was left off of the salary ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained that the Common Council desires to amend the salary ordinance for 2014. Now therefore be it further ordained that the Common Council desires that the following be amended into the salary ordinance for 2014. A, Page 5, Section 6, Shift Differential for the Police Department. Each police officer who works between 2:00 PM and 6:00 AM each day shall receive a shift differential of $1 per physical hour worked. Currently, each police officer is paid 50 cents per physical hour worked. This was left out of the salary ordinance for 2014. B, Page 4, Line 15, Detective Supervisor Pay for the Police Department. Please add the Detective Supervisor $96.15. This was left out of the salary ordinance for 2014. C, Page 4, Line 9, Captain, change from $173.08 to $230.76. D, Page 4, Line 11, Sergeant, change from $38.46 to $96.15. Now therefore be it ordained that this amendment shall only apply to this ordinance listed above. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the Common Council, signed by the Council President, attested by the Clerk Treasurer, and signed by the Mayor.
Floor is open for questions or comments. Because this is an amendment, we can pass this on one reading only?
Yes.
Scott, does this cover everything we spoke of just minutes ago?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question. Dan, you wrote in your financial report that we need to, as far as the Detective Supervisor, we need to retroactive back to January 2012. I don't see any kind of...
Right. There's a, I didn't write this here amendment, and there's a couple other things. This was not left out of the salary ordinance where it was said it was left out, the entire salary ordinance. This was not done until the last Board of Works meeting in December. So the budget was already done, and the salary ordinance was already voted on.
But the, the 50 cents was left out.
The 50 cents doesn't have to be in the salary ordinance.
Okay. Anthony, on your, on your thing, counselor.
Yeah, that's my question.
I think I would go back to the ordinance in 2000, the salary ordinance number in 2012, and attach it to that.
Okay.
So. If not, we're in bridge and counter.
I guess I'm just confused, of course. There's two separate issues at play here. This being an impact to the budget that has passed in the salary ordinance for 2014. Do you know the monetary impact overall, and is it a substantial amount? I mean, is it something that...
It doesn't, it doesn't affect our Category 1 budget.
It doesn't, okay.
No, it, it doesn't increase the budget. It doesn't take from anybody else. It's just...
Okay, thanks.
Step up here so they can get it on camera and on film, so people can home, can hear what you're saying.
The budget that was approved, the, in Category 1, that money is still there. There's not an increase that we're asking for. There's, the money's there. It was not included in some of the salaries of officers that have retired or left, and that's what we're using from the salary money.
But I would like to clarify that. At the same point, this was not in the budget for 2014 per the way it's written.
That is correct. It was the, the position pay and the salary for the detective and the shift differential were not written in there, but it, the money's there in the salary. It just wasn't written in.
And that's a result of contract negotiation? Is that the way I'm understanding that, or no?
The, the contract, the FOP, when they approached me in December, they wanted to correct a pay, a payment issue for sergeants and captains. Last year, you adjusted the lieutenant's position pay, and it put it closer to the captain. So that what they wanted to do is they wanted to separate that a little bit. So they come forward, and that's what they come up with.
Okay, all right. I wanted to make sure that... And then, may I ask the second question about...
Absolutely.
Detective supervision. That was, I mean, that money's already been spent. I mean, there's nothing, I mean...
For 2013, but not for 2014.
2000, wait a second. 12, 13, he was paid that. If you guys do not go back retroactive to December 2011 when that was approved, he will have to pay that money back. So what you're basically doing is, if you approve it retroactive, he does not have to pay it back. Otherwise, he does.
And how was it approved originally? I mean, where did, I guess...
It was never in the salary ordinance, and you cannot pay something that's not in the salary ordinance.
How much are you talking?
About $2,500 a year ballpark.
So that leads me to, my first question is, it doesn't say in here that it's, the pay is retroactive, so I don't want him to have to repay it, even though I firmly believe that he won't have to anyway. So do we need to add retroactive in this ordinance, is what I was...
I would say to play it safe, absolutely.
You can't to clean it up.
Okay. Well, then I motion to amend...
The amendment.
Detective Supervisor Pay retroactive to January 1st, 2012. Is that correct, Dan?
January 1st, 2012, correct.
That's my motion.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any other questions on the amendment?
Any other questions on the amendment? I'll ask for a motion to approve the amendment, including the amendment that counselor brought forward.
I motion we approve General Ordinance Number 20-2013, the amended version of the amendment.
I second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please sign the voting sheet.
General Ordinance Number 15-2013 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 72 of the City of Beech Grove Code of Ordinances. Chapter 72 pursuant to parking privileges for physically handicapped persons concerning private business property, local government buildings, schools, and other shopping centers. Whereas negotiating for parking can be made much harder should a person have a disability, and whereas accommodations should be made to assist persons with disabilities parked relatively close to the entrance of a building. And whereas persons who do not have disabilities should refrain from parking in properly marked disabled spaces, and whereas the common council desires to enforce parking restrictions pursuant to persons with disabilities. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to have local law enforcement enforce regulations pursuant to disabled parking. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council of the City of Beech Grove desires that the following section be added to Chapter 72 of the City of Beech Grove Code of Ordinances. Section 72.08, Parking Privileges for Physically Handicapped Persons. A, as used in this section, physically handicapped persons mean, one, any person who has been issued a parking permit for physically handicapped individuals pursuant to IC-9-14-5; number two, any person who has been issued a handicapped person's license plate or decal pursuant to IC-9-18-11; or, three, any person who has been issued a disabled veteran license plate pursuant to IC-9-18-18. B, as used in this section, private business property and shopping center mean privately-owned real estate property on which the public is invited to travel for business purposes. C, the director of the Department of Public Works shall mark parking spaces on public street for the exclusive use of physically handicapped persons seven days per week, 24 hours per day. D, the owner or manager of a shopping center or private business property may reserve parking spaces within such shopping center or private business property for the exclusive use of physically handicapped persons at all times that such shopping center or private business property is open to the public. E, physically handicapped persons who park at such designated spaces shall display on their vehicle either a parking permit issued pursuant to IC-9-14-5, a handicapped person license plate issued pursuant to IC-9-18-22, or a disabled veteran license plate issued pursuant to IC-9-18-18. Failure to display such placard or plate shall be a violation of this section and shall subject the owner, operator, or operator of the vehicle to penalties provided for violations of this chapter. F, physically handicapped persons who park at designated spaces shall be subject to all restrictions and requirements applicable to such space, including time restrictions and other restrictions imposed by the property owner or management. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires that this amendment be included in Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this amendment only applies to Chapter 72 and no other chapter. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall come into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Motion to approve General Ordinance Number 15-2013 on third reading.
I'll make said motion. I'll make said motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number 16-2013 is up for third and final reading this evening. I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety, please.
General Ordinance Number 16-2013 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 70 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove, addressing traffic patterns around entrances to fire stations. Whereas the City of Beech Grove has two fire stations centrally located to provide fire and EMS protection for the citizens of Beech Grove, and whereas both fire stations are located on heavily traveled roadways, and whereas traffic sometimes has to come to a stop as ambulances and fire engines leave the station on emergency responses, and whereas signs have been installed clearly identifying fire station zones on both Churchman Avenue and Albany Street. Therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to minimize the chances of accidents caused by emergency vehicles responding to calls for assistance by establishing emergency zones at each fire station. Therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires the following amendments be added to Chapter 70 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Section 70.37, Fire Station Emergency Zone. A, there are hereby created and designated areas defined and established as fire station emergency zones, which are defined as that portion of any public way used as a street, road, boulevard, parkway, highway, or alley which is located indicably to any fire station where emergency vehicles are garaged and extends for a distance of 300 feet along all streets, roads, boulevards, parkways, highways, or alleys in all directions from the traffic entrance used by the emergency vehicle to enter such public way. B, no person shall drive a motor vehicle on any street, road, boulevard, parkway, highway, or alley within a fire station emergency zone established pursuant to subsection A at a speed greater than that which would allow such person to stop safely and to avoid emergency vehicles. C, the director of the Department of Public Works shall post reasonable and adequate signs indicating the existence of each fire station emergency zone, their point of commencement and point of termination. Such signs shall warn of the danger of emergency vehicles entering the public way and a requirement of caution and reduced speed in such zones. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 70 of the Code of Ordinances as such. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 70 and no other chapter. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Motion to approve General Ordinance Number 16-2013 on third and final reading.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign, please.
I just have a question about that, because it's been so long since we talked about it. As far as enforcement, is that going to be enforced like a school zone? Is that how that would be?
It's more of a warning sign, and I don't know. It'd be up to a judge if he wants to enhance it, but it's still the same speed limit. It just warns people that it's a fire station area or a fire zone, and alert if they hear a siren that may be more alert where it could be coming from.
Okay.
But it's still the same fine, same speed limit that would be enforced.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
General Ordinance Number 17-2013 is up for third and final reading this evening. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 17-2013 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove pursuant to fire lane parking for public buildings. Whereas from time to time, the Beech Grove Fire Department is called to respond to a reported emergency in a public building, and whereas depending on the emergency, time may be of essence, and clear access to the public building becomes vital. And whereas private vehicle parking in these areas could cause delays and other problems which may hamper emergency operations, and whereas persons who oversee public buildings should assist or emergency service whenever possible to maintain open access in front of buildings. Now be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances to assist the Beech Grove Fire Department and other fire departments who may have caused to respond to a reported emergency in a public building. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires that this amendment be placed in the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Section 72.24, Observance of Fire Lanes. A, it shall be unlawful for the owner, driver, or operator of any vehicle to park or stop such vehicle or to permit such vehicle to be parked or to stand at any time or to place any other personal property upon or in any fire lane. Any vehicle or other personal property found to be obstructing the fire lane shall be cited by any law enforcement officer with jurisdiction. B, in addition, any vehicle or other personal property may be towed upon the request of any law enforcement or Fire Prevention Bureau personnel that have jurisdiction. The owner of the vehicle's personal property shall be liable for all tow-ins and resulting storage or charges. C, the Fire Prevention Bureau or the Fire Department shall, to the greatest extent feasible, inspect the areas surrounding all public buildings, and the Fire Prevention Chief shall determine and establish the emergency vehicle lanes and notify the property owners affected thereby in writing. D, fire lanes shall be established and marked as follows. One, fire lanes shall be 12 feet from the sidewalk, driveway, service area, or other areas immediately adjacent to any building or structure deemed necessary by the Fire Prevention Chief. Two, where acceptable, the pavement of the fire emergency lane shall be marked with the words "No Parking Fire Lane" in large visible letters and stripes of no less than four inches in width installed 12 feet from the sidewalk, curb, or other items adjacent to the building in question. The words "No Parking Fire Lane" shall be between the stripe and the sidewalk, curb, or other item adjacent to the building. Three, all curb striping and language required on pavement shall be marked in yellow coloration with paint or other types of substances that may be approved by the chief of the Fire Prevention Bureau. And four, signs stating "No Parking Fire Lane," meeting the Indiana Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices shall be installed no less than every 30 feet apart. E, the Fire Prevention Chief may in designated fire lanes determine that portion of those lanes because of location of hydrants, standpipes, or other fire prevention devices, or because of the necessities for ingress and egress that any blockage constitutes a fire hazard. Areas so determined shall be designated tow-away zones and shall be so marked and posted. Any vehicle parked in such zones shall be removed at the direction of any fire official or police officer. Now be it ordained that the common council desires this amendment be included in the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only pertains to the amendment of Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Motion to approve General Ordinance Number 17-2013 on third and final reading.
I have a question first. Would this be the area along the fence, along the football field, and in front of the high school gymnasium entrance?
It wouldn't include in front of the fence because it's a building, but would include the gymnasium, the swimming area, the front of the building.
So me and my big truck that don't have enough room to turn around there now, this will keep people from parking along that curb so that possibly a fire department truck or an ambulance could get in there?
It will give us, the police, the right to...
The ability to remove those cars.
Yes, because we can't do it now. There's an Indianapolis ordinance, but we cannot enforce that in Beech Grove.
Thank you.
Motion to approve General Ordinance Number 17-2013 on third and final reading.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. That concludes unfinished business carried over from previous meetings onto new business. January of each month, council, you have to elect a president pro tem, and it's up this evening for 2014. So at this time, the floor is open for nominations.
I nominate Anthony Davis.
I nominate Ed Bell.
Is there any other nominations? Need a motion to close the nominations, please.
Make that motion.
We will do it by singular vote, starting on my left. Kathy?
Can we speak first?
Oh, yeah.
My concern, doesn't the council president and the mayor have to work hand in hand? With no disrespect to you, Mayor, or Anthony, in the two years I've been on the council, I haven't exactly seen you guys be the most cordial, I guess. And my concern would be, and again, I have nothing, I wouldn't care if John Jennings was nominated, no disrespect, Anthony. Well, I'm just saying, you got to get along, and I don't see this factor happening if Anthony should get elected.
I don't know why they wouldn't get along.
Even in politics, it might not be pretty. It doesn't always have to be easy, but...
That's for sure.
We've proved that.
Yeah. Just my two cents.
Here's my two cents. It could go either way, because maybe if they're working together, they could get along better, and they would see each other's point of view. That's a point to make. But on the other hand, Mr. Bell has only been president for one year, and I think he's got good ideas going forward for this year, and he should be given the opportunity. So that's my two cents.
We will conduct the vote by voice vote, starting on my far left.
I'll vote for Mr. Bell.
Myself.
Anthony?
Myself.
Ed?
Anthony. Anthony.
Okay, the council is deadlocked, three to three. I would defer to my attorney, but I don't feel comfortable voting on something that is not my appointment. So as far as I'm concerned, we can table this until the next meeting.
I thought all ties were, just not just considered a tie that the mayor's going to, would be to expert, unless he...
The mayor, well, you're right about that, but he can table it.
He can table this and...
No, this is a council appointment, and I would rather the council appoint their representative for them. So what I will do is I will table it until the next meeting.
I accept your recommendation. I agree we should table it.
We will table it till February the 3rd. Council, next order, and I will defer now to the current council president, Ed Bell, for RDC nominations for the council.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll open the floor up for nominations for the RDC. We have... We have two current members here, Joe Griffin and Don Webb. Does anyone have nomination? I had a phone call from Tammy Story wanting back to be on, so I guess I will nominate her for-
She did express interest to me also that she'd be interested in the position.
Okay.
Um, I don't, are you done, Ed? I don't know that I feel comfortable not letting everybody have a chance to speak with Tammy Story. So if we're going to table the council president, I would also recommend that we table the RDC nominations, if, if that pleases.
Motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
Need a second? We'll table the-
Got a vote, don't we?
All in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Okay, we will pick this up at the next meeting on February the third. Council, I'll defer again to the, to the board, or the council president for BZA nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have three individuals that have, that to me and the mayor, that they would like to currently stay on as BGA, and that's Joe Hag, Diana Hendricks, and Julie Weaver. Do we have any other nominations? If not, I'll close the nominations and go forward and ask the council about these three appointments, if we should move forward and allow them-
Are you calling for a vote?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. I will ask the clerk to read into the record Resolution Number Two, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
Resolution Number Two, Twenty Fourteen is a resolution presented to the City of Beech Grove Common Council to fill positions on the local Board of Zoning Appeals as requested by the Department of Metropolitan Development for the City of Indianapolis and Marion County. Whereas, the City of Beech Grove established a Board of Zoning Appeals in nineteen ninety-one, and whereas, the common council of the City of Beech Grove has three appointments, the local Board of Zoning Appeals, and the City of Indianapolis has two appointments on the same board. And whereas, the City of Indianapolis reappoints or appoints new board members in January of each calendar year by resolution. And whereas, the Department of Metropolitan Development requests that the common council for the City of Beech Grove appoint or reappoint their three representatives for the local Board of Zoning Appeals. Therefore, be it ordained that the common council for the City of Beech Grove appoints the following citizens to the local Board of Zoning Appeals for a period of one year commencing upon approval of this resolution. Julie Weaver, Diana Hendricks, and Joe Hag. Therefore, be it ordained that this resolution only applies for the appointments to the local Board of Zoning Appeals and no other commission or board. Therefore, be it further ordained that this resolution shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Questions or comments? Motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please sign the sheet. Council Resolution Number Three, Two Thousand and Four is a resolution concerning the Interlocal Cooperation Act of Indiana. This time, I'll defer to the clerk to read the resolution into the record.
Resolution Number Three, Twenty Fourteen is a resolution for the continuation of the joint cooperative action and agreement pursuant to the Interlocal Cooperation Act of Indiana. Whereas, it is desirable, advantageous, and in the public interest to enter into an agreement for joint cooperative action as described in the joint resolution and articles of agreement interlocal association and as authorized by the Interlocal Cooperation Act of Indiana. And whereas, section two of the joint resolution and articles of agreement state that the agreement shall renew for five years, periods. Whereas, General Ordinance Number Eighteen, Nineteen Seventy-seven calls for the City of Beech Grove to be part of the Interlocal Association. Whereas, the cities of Franklin, Greenwood, Greenfield, Shelbyville, and Beech Grove are joint members of the Interlocal Association. Therefore, be it ordained that the elected official of each of the following municipal governments approves the joint resolution and articles of agreement, and as the authorized representatives of their unit of government pledges cooperation and elects entering into such agreement as previously authorized and directed. And therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires to renew the agreement for an additional five years. Now therefore be it ordained that this resolution only applies to the Interlocal Association Agreement. Now therefore be it further ordained that this resolution goes into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Questions or comments from council members?
Yeah, Dan, is there a, do you know, by chance, is there a fee attached with this?
Yes, but I don't know what it is right offhand.
It's about two hundred and fifty bucks.
Two hundred and fifty?
A year?
Yes.
I have a question. And was I, I understanding that he said that, that mayor is our representative? Have you attended? I mean, is this a valuable thing to-
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, it's really interesting because not only do you go to meetings, but you also sign vouchers and claims to where the, the, this is a federally funded program, and these checks go to pay for people's tuition and job training and get them re-employed. So, yes, this is really good stuff. I, I knew nothing about it before I was mayor, but it's really good, and whoever the mayor is should, they should keep doing this.
Yeah, and I, maybe, maybe publicize it so that people know that what's available, and, I mean, because obviously, people are looking for more.
Yes. So, this-
I mean, it sounds like a good thing, so I-
Yes, it's a very good thing.
Thank you.
Any other question? No questions? Motion to approve Resolution Number Three, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Please sign the, uh, vote sheet.
It's only time you have to get up, man.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, it took me four resolutions, but-
General Ordinance Number One, Two Thousand and Fourteen is up for first reading. This time, I'll defer to Counselor Davidson, who introduced the ordinance, please.
Thank you, Mayor. General Ordinance Number One, Two Thousand and Fourteen is an ordinance that establishes the Beech Grove Safety Program. Whereas, the common council of the City of Beech Grove has codified certain ordinances compromising the Beech Grove City Code of Ordinances. And whereas, the City of Beech Grove through its police department is charged with providing for the public's safety. And whereas, the City of Beech Grove collects revenue through its safe, safe driver deferral program. And whereas, the Beech Grove Police Department does not currently have a traffic and/or public safety division or program. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to establish the Beech Grove Public Safety Program. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter Thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances as prescribed as follows. Add Chapter Thirty-three Beech Grove Public Safety Program. Add chapter, or section Thirty-three point four zero establishment of program. A. In an effort to increase public safety, the city police department is authorized and delegated to develop and implement a public safety program. B. The program shall provide additional overtime opportunities for officers of the city police department. C. Officers participating in the program shall conduct patrols focused exclusively on the enforcement of the Beech Grove Code or ordinances and in accordance with the program's metrics. D. All citations and/or tickets that result from the program shall be filed in the Beech Grove City Court. E. The program shall not replace or be in contravention of existing state laws or programs, but shall be complementary to and in aid of such laws or programs. Add section Thirty-three point four one administering the program. A. The program shall be administered by the administrator. B. The administrator shall be the chief of police or his designee. C. The administrator shall establish the metrics of the program. D. The administrator shall determine the number of hours the program will be available. E. Participating officers will be compensated at their respective overtime rate. Add section Thirty-three point four two funding of program. A. Upon passage of this ordinance, an appropriation of five thousand dollars shall be dispersed from the city's general fund to establish the program. B. After the first five thousand appropriation, the program shall be funded by, by receipt of twenty-five percent of funds collected through the Beech Grove Safe Driver Deferral Program. C. On a monthly basis, the clerk shall disperse from the program to the police overtime budget the amount of money corresponding to the number of hours utilized. D. The program should, the program may not provide overtime opportunities in excess of the program's funding. E. The common council may make additional appropriations as it see fits to fund the program. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council have, has found it just to establish the Beech Grove Public Safety Program. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter Thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect thirty days after passage of the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I would just like to comment to this. My reason for writing this or sponsoring this in the first place is I rode with night shift several times and noticed that they are, they're busy, bouncing from one call to another, nonstop. And definite, a definite need for a traffic enforcement in the city is needed, and I think that dedicating money and watching this grow over time will allow our officers to increase traffic patrols and increasing the police presence and our presence, and hopefully minimizing other crimes such as larceny and stuff like that.
Counselor, I, I think you've seen it. Don't you think that the police department could use more people?
Absolutely.
Me too.
Yeah, I guess, maybe chief, I, um, I, I guess, this is all new, so, I mean, I get the concept, but really, isn't the fact that we do, if, if that's the case, we need more officers on shifts rather than, I mean, I, this is a way to help us supplement it, but this is not a solution, correct? Or am I, I-
It's not a solution to replace an officer's on the road, but what this does, it will assign an officer or officers to do traffic detail, and they aren't assigned to take runs. The officers that are assigned to take runs, like Councilman Davidson said, they are busy. If we can allocate resources for overtime people off-duty to come in and do this, they're dedicated for the, the traffic control part of it. It, they have a program in Marion County that's been going on for years, and it works pretty well. And it funds itself, I don't know how the funds work, other than through the tickets, but it self-funds itself.
Okay, so it is primarily exclusively traffic ordinance?
It's exclusively traffic, and it's not for officers that are working. It doesn't take away from the citizens that get your regular shift officers.
And it's for all shifts, not just night shift?
Right, it would be-
However you end up-
It would be determined by what our needs are as far as traffic control.
With this, just thinking out loud, the school bus issue we had last year-
It could, uh-
This could fall under that?
It could fall, yes, definitely fall under that.
I would like to comment on this. I talked to the State Board of Accounts. They said that this would not fly. Number one, there's nothing appropriated for it. It's not in the budget, and so what you're even asking to do is not correct.
Okay, I respectfully disagree.
Did you talk to the State Board of Accounts?
Doesn't matter.
You should before you write an ordinance because it, it's, it's contrary. Your increase in the budget, there was nothing appropriated to it, so-
How am I increasing the budget? I'm using funds from the deferral program.
No, you are ceding it with five thousand dollars out of the general fund.
Right, and then, I mean-
Well, you can't do that. It's not appropriated.
Well, just like you can't take funds from our officers who are assigned to, let's say, the DEA, and put those in the general fund, just like that, right?
No. Anthony, I'm just telling you what they told me. If you guys care to vote, you do what you want to do, but it's contrary to what the State Board of Accounts said.
Well, thank you for your information.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council members?
Do we need to, do we need to look into this further, Anthony?
I think passing it on first reading and then, you know, keeping it-
I, I agree. We have passed everything on first reading, searching for more information. I have no problem doing that again.
I'll second that.
I motion we accept-
That's my condition, because I want to know more about the initial appropriation and figure on that. Otherwise, I have no problem with that.
I motion we accept General Ordinance Number One, Two Thousand and Fourteen on first reading only.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. That concludes new business for this evening. Council comments beginning on my far right. Dave?
No comments. Thank you.
I would like to first mention the tragedy that happened at Purdue University today with kids in college. Hope everything out there turns out to be as isolated as they say it was. It was a one person on one person, not just a random shooting, and hopefully this all stops soon. We're still in the middle of basketball season. If you haven't gone out to watch the boys yet, or the girls, they're fun to watch, quality entertainment. We're more than halfway through the season, so get out there and support your local athletes. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have nothing.
Anthony?
Um, first, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Councilman Mowley for the nomination. I appreciate your-
Should have played tonight. Should have played tonight.
Councilor Jennings for his vote as well. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out and, um, thankful for our city employees as well. I think we had a pretty nice snowstorm since our last meeting, and Brad and those guys did an excellent job of clearing the streets. I know it was nice to wake up, especially the other day, look out front and have a clear street in front of my house. That was top-notch. That's it.
Ed?
Thanks for coming out tonight and, uh, having you with there. A lot of work out there with the snow. And I want to thank the council for my opportunity to spend the present for past year, and move on and continue. on and continue, and thank you for the nomination.
Anthony?
Everybody always says, I thank the DPW, but I am done with snow, so, I really don't want any more, but thanks for taking care of it when it comes, so. And thank you, Mayor Dylan, for coming, and nice to see you here.
With no other comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Nothing from you?
Thanks a lot.
I'll accept this motion.
Meeting's adjourned eight oh five P.M. We will convene again on February third. Thank you. Are we okay, Tim? Okay, whenever you're ready. Good evening and welcome to the State of the City address for two thousand and fourteen. My name is Dennis Buckley, mayor of the city of Beach Grove, and at this time, I will present, as the executive officer of the city, the annual report to the citizens of Beach Grove on the condition of our city. Before I start, I would like to introduce a few folks. Seated to my left is our clerk treasurer, Dan McMillan. Dan? And our city attorney, Craig Wiley. And out in the audience, one board member, Sandra Seward, here this evening. Ed Bell could not be here. Ed got hurt today and couldn't make it tonight. Our department heads are here with us this evening, our fire chief, police chief, public works director, parks director, building commissioner's here with us, and Jim Brooks, our rep on the ABC board, is here with us. So, we'll go ahead and get started, and this will be available tomorrow morning online, and I'll send it over to the web administrator tomorrow morning, and it'll be available for your review. But anyway, I would like to take this time to report on the state of your city. I must report that we are doing better than I anticipated, as we have progressed well over the last twenty-four months, but we still have a long way to go. In October of two thousand and thirteen, the city council passed a fully funded balanced budget for our department heads and administration to work with in two thousand and fourteen. This marks the second budget that our administration has presented, and we are making strides into maintaining vital services to the city and our citizens. The two thousand and twelve fiscal year was reviewed in two thousand and thirteen as a result of an audit conducted by the State Board of Accounts. The two thousand and twelve budget was the first budget cycle that we worked with as an administration. The results, which have been released to the general public, show an improvement in our financial condition, record-keeping, documentation filing, and overall accountability as a city. This is an improvement over the conditions found prior to our appointment pursuant to the two thousand and eleven budget. Once again, we were able to continue to provide much-needed benefits to our employees and retired members, and our Board of Public Works and Safety approved agreements with the FOP Lodge eighty-six and Firefighters Local four sixteen. One of the indicators that led me to believe that our government was stabilizing is with our workman's compensation and liability insurance renewal. Our city had struggled finding companies to even underwrite us a few years ago. Now with all of the new equipment and upgrades, asset inventory that was asked for by the clerk, and along with new policies concerning safety and workforce development, our annual premium increased by less than twelve thousand dollars, which is really good. Our governing boards and city council were very busy in two thousand and thirteen. Our Board of Sanitation and Board of Public Works and Safety approved new agreements with Covanta, Keystone Programs, Stormwater Services, sanitary services, paving, safe roads, our routes to school, stormwater development, and a rate study for stormwater implementation. Our city council approved ordinances pertaining to sanitary sewer rates, commercial trash pickup, residential trash pickup, violation fees for the city court, employee drug testing, holiday work schedule, commercial vehicle parking, license fees, building codes, panhandling, municipal vehicle accidents, greenscape commission, and salary ordinance for appointed and elected officials. In two thousand and thirteen, Main Street was reconstructed. It caused a terrible inconvenience to those who reside and conduct business on Main Street, but it was the most important project that this city has undertaken in years and needed to be done. I have said on many occasions that I regret the hardship I have caused citizens and building owners, but I do not regret going forward with the reconstruction. As a result of this, our city has benefited from new business and more people visiting our business district than in years past. Plus, our water drainage problem has went away. This was apparent when we had a four-inch rain event in December, and no flooding occurred, not even in basements. We are down to the final payments on the project and are looking forward to having the project paid in full by spring. Special thanks goes to Great X, who was the general contractor on the job, and Crossroads Engineers for their work on this project. As you can see, this project has changed the face of our city. My thoughts are, let's keep good things happening. We continue to look for alternative ways to fund our departments and projects. In two thousand and thirteen, we utilized a four-point-six million dollar grant to reconstruct Main Street. Our fire department received funding to replace protective clothing. Our police department accessed already-approved grants to purchase and install cameras in vehicles and a license plate reader, and at year's end, we received notification of grant approvals for a signed inventory and replacement program and safe routes to school. All of these grants will make a significant improvement to our city. In two thousand and fourteen, we will apply for funding through OCR, which is the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, in an attempt to purchase a new fire engine. Soon, some local business owners will receive an application to improve the facades on the front of their buildings through a small business program called Fostering Commercial Urban Strategies Focus. We continue to charge for heavy trash and brush removal, and soon, we will make adjustments to our sewage works bill by fifty-seven cents per month to offset the cost adjustments by Covanta for disposing of trash. In two thousand and thirteen, our city placed a second ambulance in service. This ambulance is staffed by Franciscan Alliance personnel and serves our city from eight A.M. to eight P.M. daily. Not only does it provide a much-needed service, but it also generates our city thousands of dollars in revenue to offset expenses and to make new improvements. In two thousand and thirteen, both of our ambulances made three thousand six hundred and ninety-five ambulance responses, and our city collected approximately eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenues as a result of ambulance billing. As a former fire chief, that is staggering. Not the money, the amount of runs. In two thousand and fourteen, it may be prudent to move forward and make this ambulance a twenty-four-hour-a-day service to generate even better EMS protection and more revenue for our city. I will also ask the fire chief to look into ways to better retrieve new equipment through Med Bill, so budgets can, funds can be set up to continue to lease purchase ambulances in the future. This is soon becoming a priority, as our ambulances are placing thousands of miles a year on the drive trains due to the run load and demands. I think the chief told me the other day that they're averaging like forty-five thousand miles a year on each ambulance. So, they're not going to last very long, and we have to look two or three years ahead to make that right. In two thousand and thirteen, we continued with our commitment to pave local roads. This was the second round of paving that we have participated in. Detroit Street from tenth to seventeenth, Thirteenth Avenue from Albany to Southern, Twenty-third Avenue partially paved, Eighth Avenue from Alton to Bell Fountain, Shaft Street from Garstang to Bell Fountain, and the alley south of Main Street from fifteenth to seventeenth were all repaved. As a result of this, we have invested approximately seven hundred thousand dollars in our local roads and streets in the last two years. We now budget approximately four hundred thousand dollars in local roads and streets for paving, and this is a much-needed improvement over years past. Two thousand and fourteen, we will focus our efforts on the completion of Twenty-third Street and the complete reconstruction of Royal Road, which has deteriorated as a result of severe drainage issues. Thanks goes to United Consulting, our DPW director, for their work over the past two years on repaving our roads. When paving doesn't occur over an extended period of time, it takes years to get caught up. For seven to eight years prior to our administration, very little was done in as far as repaving was concerned, and we all see the condition of our roads. In two thousand and thirteen, we began the process of conducting repairs to our sanitary sewer system and stormwater drainage. In two thousand and thirteen, we conducted approximately two hundred thousand dollars in repairs to these systems, as much-needed work was done on South Fourth Avenue, the intersection of Fletcher at Ninth, behind three oh two North Eighth, two-hundred block of Albany, Detroit from Fourteenth to Sixteenth Street, the intersection of Fifteenth and Buffalo, twelve-hundred block of Parkway, and our sanitary sewer system was extended by the addition of the Teachers Credit Union on Emerson Avenue. Thanks goes again to the DPW director and Westler Engineering for their work in assisting our city with rehabbing our sanitary sewers. This city can simply not afford to go years without maintenance or repairs to the sanitary sewer system, and that has exactly been the case. Some of these projects listed above that I just mentioned should have been completed back in two thousand and five and two thousand and six. Now we have an employee who has been hired full-time to work exclusively on both the sanitary and stormwater systems in our city. As the weather breaks this spring, we will begin a major sanitary sewer rehab project in the area of Eighth and Bell Fountain to replace the sanitary sewer system, which has caused serious backups over the years and was recommended to be replaced back in two thousand and five by Westler Engineering. In two thousand and thirteen, we began the process of developing ordinances and rates pursuant to stormwater management. In two thousand and six, our city established a stormwater utility by ordinance, but never progressed with rules and fees to address stormwater matters. I intend to bring the guidelines and fees forward to the city council in March to begin the process of collecting stormwater fees. This is yet another very difficult decision that had to be made, but it is the right thing to do and needs to be done. It constitutes a good business decision based on a simple premise. We have several identified drainage issues, identified by Westler Engineering and classified as capital improvement projects throughout our city. These identified projects were brought forward in two thousand and nine and have a projected cost of approximately four-point-nine million dollars to correct, and we have no funding to make corrections. We are subject to inspections by I.D.A.M. and are required to file MS four reports annually, and without having a stormwater utility in place makes it extremely difficult to comply. Coming within the next five to ten years, all cities across the United States will be required to separate fluids and solids in their stormwater drains prior to introduction of water into a waterway or creek. And I'm thinking, how is any city going to pay for these requirements if they don't have a stormwater utility in place to assess fees? In two thousand and six, residents of our city were paying a dollar fifty per month for stormwater drainage on their property taxes to Marion County. All of that stopped, but from that point till today, we have gone almost eight years without collecting any fees to offset expenses. It is time to move the city forward, pursue it to stormwater management. I think we'd be negligent if we didn't, personally. In two thousand and thirteen, we continued to invest in our departments and the services provided to our citizens. Our police department purchased four new vehicles. Our fire department purchased three new staff vehicles and a pickup truck with plow capabilities, and we took delivery of a fire engine. Fire department also ordered five thousand feet of new hose, and thirty-five trauma kits were ordered for our police department. Our Department of Public Works purchased two new vehicles with plows and two more spreaders were purchased, bringing our total to six, which is the most we have ever had as a city. These are all good purchases that have made it easier to deliver much-needed services to the citizens of our city. In the first quarter of two thousand and fourteen, we expect to take delivery of a new skid steer, which is, will greatly assist the workers out at DPW and in our park system. In two thousand and fourteen, our police department has already ordered two new vehicles through the Criminal Investigation Fund, and by year's end, we will have no choice but to replace the laptop computers that our police officers currently use, as they have become obsolete. As we progress, we will continue to identify equipment that should be replaced, and we are looking at the leaf collection equipment out at DPW for replacement as well. My thoughts again are, let's keep good things happening. In two thousand and thirteen, we rededicated South Grove Park by naming it Chalice Park after longtime Parks Director Don Chalice, and we rededicated the baseball field in the city park by naming it Dick Templin Field after Dick Templin. In two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, approximately four hundred thousand dollars was invested in our park system. This includes new shelters, roofs, restroom facility, playground equipment, walkways at Hartman Field, and we installed ADA compliant playground equipment. Over three hundred thousand dollars was spent to repair an age-old erosion problem in Lick Creek, and additional trees were planted near the creek line at Sarah T. Bolton Park. And I commend Tom Hannan for all of his work in the park system. We have wonderful parks, and I contribute that to Tom's leadership. In two thousand and thirteen, our city participated in many civic events and recognized citizens on special accomplishments. Our city participated in the Fall Festival, Fall Festival Parade, Beach Party, Summer Concert Series, Little League Parade, Homecoming Parade, Relay for Life, Promoters Club Fireworks, Lions Club Pork Shops Dinner, Lions Club Bean Dinner, Chamber of Commerce, Beautify Beach Grove Walk, St. Francis Walk to Remember, Oktoberfest, Memorial Day Service, and the Veterans Day Service. In two thousand and thirteen, our city issued proclamations for the American Legion, Tri-Cappa Constitution Week, Fire Prevention Week, Walk to Remember, Relay for Life, and recognize Nancy Roberts, Evan Smiley, Roger Knight, John Quinn, and John O'Gara, Beach Grove Middle School Cross Country Team, and the Beach Grove Middle School Basketball Team. And last but not least, economic development. For the past five years, our assessed valuation has headed downward, but I think that may change within the next year. This is a direct result of investments made in our city by private corporations. Sometimes I gauge how we are doing by how busy our building commissioner is, and by how many permits get issued for construction in City Hall. In two thousand and thirteen, and I think our building commissioner can attest to this, he was very busy, and I suspect that the coming construction season will be just as good as last year, maybe even better. In two thousand and thirteen, A.D.M. In 2013, ADA Milling announced plans to construct a new mill in our city. This is a $30 million investment for our city, which is expected to go online by the end of April 2014. Conetrix Energy announced plans to make $14 million worth of improvements to the LNG facility here in our city, which is expected to go online by the end of March 2014. I would like to thank the City of Indianapolis and Develop Indy for their assistance in working with ADA Milling to provide the opportunity to make this investment. I would also like to thank Citizens Energy Group for all of their investments in our city in 2013. Citizens Energy Group installed new water mains on Main Street prior to the construction, completed a septic tank removal program on Sumner Avenue, and their investment in LNG. These are all critical investments for our city and are very much appreciated. Much-needed new business began to arrive as Main Street was completed. Yes, we lost businesses during construction, but we gained at least 12 new ones after construction was complete. Main Street was not the only benefactor of new business. Our industrial park gained some new businesses as well. We are now home to Klosterman's Bakery Distribution Center, Tool Shed Rental Center, Industrial Paint Coating, Lamping User Heating and Cooling, and Priority One Ambulance Service. In 2014, we expect to welcome new businesses such as Waffle House, Steve Verrino's Eatery, Jimmy John's, and maybe even a senior group at the old Rockpile property. And hopefully, we will finally receive some type of direction from Franciscan Alliance concerning the vacant hospital property. As all of you know, it closed in March of 2012. And it has been a very slow progress. And the folks at Franciscan Alliance are holding it pretty tight to the vest. In the spring of 2013, I asked our city attorney to approach the assessor's office to begin the assessment of property taxes because they no longer, in my opinion, were a non-for-profit because the building was empty. Soon after that, Franciscan Alliance filed a appeal. And they have yet to begin paying property taxes. I sent the Franciscan Alliance CEO and Commissioner Walker a letter about two months ago requesting that they start the process to demolish the property. The property is set for almost two years, and the condition is deteriorating. So, in my opinion, as mayor, I would like to see the property torn down and new development begin. St. Francis hasn't committed to that. St. Francis still owns the property. They still manage the property, and they still oversee it. So, I think we're at the mercy of the hospital, but I sure wish they'd move so we can get something going in there. And I think that's the sentiment that's held by a lot of people in our city, so we'll, we'll move on from there, and hopefully, we will have news by the end of February on the property. So what does all this mean? It means that we have begun to stabilize our city, and we are focusing on the basics. We should pave our roads, rehab our and clean our sewers. We should fix our drainage issues, invest in our parks, pick up trash, and continue to provide police and fire protection. That's the core of any good city, so we should do that as well. We have also stabilized ourselves financially. Folks, we can no longer depend on increasing property taxes to fund our government. We have to have different forms of revenue that we can generate to make investments in our infrastructure and services that we provide. Growing as a city is the only way that we can maintain the quality of services that the citizens of our city are accustomed to. We are pleased to report that our pension funds are solid. Our portion of the public safety county option income tax balance is good. Our return of investment concerning the sewage utility is adequate. The rainy day fund is approaching $200,000, which is really good. And the Main Street Loan Program, which, when we came into office, was in complete shambles, is now in the process of being turned around. And for the first time since our administration took office, the clerk and I sat down and met with a prospective new business owner who has an interest in the loan program. That doesn't mean he'll be awarded one penny, but we have come a long way in two years to taking a program that was a complete disaster and turning it around. I am proud to say that we have not lost one employee due to budget constraints, nor have we had to eliminate any service as a result of diminished revenues. That was not the case when we began our service to the city in 2012. The clerk can, our clerk can tell you as better than anybody that in 2012, this city almost defaulted twice, once in February and once in June. We were handed a budget that was grossly underfunded, and we never lost anybody. The clerk and the web administrator continue to release information for public knowledge as you should be informed as to what your government is doing. Thousands upon thousands of citizens have logged onto our website to access public information, and that is a far cry from previous administrations concerning openness. We said from day one that we would be accessible and accountable, and that is exactly the case. So where do we go from here? We continue to provide good services, adjust our fees as needed, and move away from property taxes. Governor Pence desires to eliminate the personal property tax on business equipment. Whether or not that passes is up to the legislature. But we, as a city, cannot continue to be handcuffed by government decreasing the amounts of tax payments to our city. We have to fund our government differently. Let's continue to fix our roads, sewers, and invest in our services. We should create a funding mechanism to fix our stormwater problems and finally solve drainage issues that have plagued us for years. Let's continue to promote new and existing business, create jobs, and increase our value as a city. And let's invest in our employees. Let's create a healthcare network that is user-friendly and provides wellness to employees and family members. We should consider giving employees incentives to reduce health costs. And how about rewarding employees who are healthy? Beginning this March, we will begin hiring part-time compliance officers whose job it will be to enforce and clean up our neighborhoods. We will utilize our local city court as the enforcement arm for local ordinances pursuant to environmental matters. In a recent meeting, meeting with our judge, I advised him that this is going to take a great deal of time to get up and running, and I would not expect tickets to show up on the court schedule until mid to late summer. Last year, I had the opportunity to listen to presentations by students regarding recycling. I thought it was very interesting, and it has convinced me that maybe we should look into recycling as a city and provide recycling to our citizens. We should all do our part to keep our city clean, and I appreciated the insight from our young students. It is my intent to revisit this matter with local students and gain more knowledge about recycling, and then maybe moving forward with a different way to recycle. In closing, I always look for indicators as to how we are doing as a city, both operationally and financially. And I keep going back to a simple question that I want all of you to think about. My question to all of you is this. Is our city better off now than it was two years ago? I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve as your mayor. It's a blessing that I can give back to this wonderful city, to our clerk, city council members, Board of Works members. To the citizens who serves on boards and committees, I say thank you. To our department heads, I say thank you. To the employees of our city, I say thank you for your dedicated service and helping to cause minimal interruptions in the lives of our citizens. We have had several challenges in 2013, including the weather, and you have performed very well. So bless each one of you and bless our beautiful city. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, February the 3rd, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce himself, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McNoel, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Andy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated January the 21st, 2014. At this time, the floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I do not either tonight.
There's no questions, comments, or concerns, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. The next order of business is approval of claims. Board, you have docket this evening, three pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $49,619.93. The floor is open for questions.
I do have one on the page three, last page, about four up from the bottom. Gregory Baker Daniels.
Yes, that is an attorney bill for Franciscan Alliance where we have some issues with some sewer issues in there, and they've been handling that. This has not came to a conclusion yet, so I really don't want to say a whole lot more about it. The mayor wants to, may want to, I don't know.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
I have none.
I have no others.
If there's no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims in the amount of $49,619.93.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Onto unfinished business, there was nothing on the agenda, however, the sanitation clerk, Lynda Moore, would like to come forward and give us an update on the billing process that the board approved last meeting. Lynda, good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to make a correction to what was talked about at the last meeting. I made a mistake in the calculation. The blank forms that we print the bills on, they're not a dollar a sheet, they're 10 cents a sheet. Now, we, so we won't be saving any money. We figured it up, it's going to cost us for a year. It's And that would be divided by 12, would be an additional $261 a month. Today, I took the utility bills to the post office, and we had to pay the full price. It cost us an extra $659.63. So we're looking at either going with voicemail and paying an additional $261 a month or going with the post office, paying $660 more a month. So, we could always, you know, keep looking for other places. Why, why we, if you do decide to approve voicemail, you know, we would be with them for a year. And then during that time, we could try to research other places that might be, save us more money. But I just wanted to update that.
Thank you, Lynda. I don't really get caught up in the, you made a mistake. I mean, we all make mistakes, and I make probably more than anybody sitting up here. So that's not an issue at all with me. Board, just a reminder of the last meeting. We made a recommendation and approved allowing the clerk to negotiate and enter into agreements on our behalf concerning this, so I think my recommendation to the board, we, we just leave it at that and let the clerk decide on how we should proceed, and then we'll go from there.
Andy, what are your thoughts?
I really don't have a preference, one way or the other. My thoughts are whichever saves us the most amount of money. And I'm not opposed to trying them for a year. You know, I think their format is good and so forth, but the main thing that Lynda and myself wanted to do, when I got ready to sign the contract, the next day, I started going over some of these things, and we caught the fact that it was wrong, and we wanted to bring it back to this board and make sure you guys understood, you know, where we were at on it. But myself, if we can save money with this company, I would say that would probably be the way to go. If we don't, we're kind of in a catch-22 situation, you know, like she said. I didn't know till just a minute ago how much increase it was at the post office, and it was what, 600 some?
Like $659.63.
Right. So, you know, you got initial setup with Keystone, so you know, we'll just have to weigh both sides and see how we come out on it.
All right.
I appreciate you coming back.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lynda. There is no new business for tonight or any miscellaneous business for that matter. Comments from board members?
I have none tonight.
I have none.
Not only ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:07 PM. We will convene Board of Works in 10 minutes. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, February the 3rd, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce himself, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McNoel and Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented printed copy of the minutes of our previous meeting dated January the 21st, 2014. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I do have one correction.
Okay.
Page one, under meeting minutes. It said that Ed Bell moved to accept the minutes as presented, and Dennis Buckley seconded. I was the person that seconded.
Okay. Thank you.
And that is all I have.
I don't have any other.
Other than that, if there's no other questions, comments, or corrections of the minutes, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. Under approval of claims, board, you have a docket this evening, twenty-six pages of claims dated February the 3rd, 2014, corporate claims in the amount of eight hundred and six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have a question, please, page one, almost in the middle. Brookville Sand and Gravel for thirty-four thousand dollars for street and alley improvements.
That was salt for the city. The mayor, Brad, and myself met one day last week because we were basically pretty much out of salt. The mayor made a phone call to this company, and they was able to come up with three hundred tons of salt. If we could pay them cash, or, you know, check at that, when we picked it up, or when they delivered, and so we made a decision that this was an emergency, we needed the salt, and as you can see, all these other towns are crying that they're out of salt and have to use sand and everything else, so we made the decision to go ahead and move forward with this.
Is this more expensive than what we, than the vendor usually?
Yes, it is. It was, our contract price, that we exceeded, everything we had under contract was seventy-two dollars a ton, this was a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton.
Thank you.
I have one on page 24, fifth one up from the bottom. Amanda Moore says, Law Record for sixteen hundred, is that a filing, or?
I can tell you what this is. This was for the city court, and it's something that was taken out of their Clerk's perpetuation fund. It's something that Judge Wells sent over to me and asked me to pay for out of their fund, and I can't tell you exactly what it was for, but that's what the department is for.
Okay.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims in the amount of eight hundred and six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Under unfinished business, the Skid Steer bid award for DPW. And at this time, I'll defer to the clerk to read the legal opinion of the city attorney.
Dear Board, I have reviewed the specifications for the purchase of a Skid Steer loader which complies with Indiana law. Based on the foregoing, I recommend that the board accept the bid for the purchase of a Skid Steer loader from M&amp;H Equipment Company in the amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Very truly yours, Craig W. Wiley, City Attorney.
Comments or questions from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
Now I'll ask for a motion to approve the recommendation of the city attorney.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye and the motion carries as well. Under new business, including introduction of resolutions, contracts, and other business, Resolution Number Four, 2014, will be brought forward at our next Board of Works meeting. The clerk is currently working with two institutions to get the best rate possible, and we will bring that pursuant to the Skid Steer, and we will bring that forward at the next meeting. Next order of new business, request to hire from the Fire Department Chief.
Mayor and Board, there's a letter that I handed out this evening to replace the one that was originally in your packet. It's dated February 3rd. Mayor and Board, I come before you today to ask approval to hire Damon Fine for the position of probationary firefighter based upon approval of Indiana perf. If approved tonight, Damon's starting salary will be one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-six cents per pay. He will have a start date of 24th of February, 2014, and this position is in our 2014 budget.
Questions or comments from board members?
And he's replacing John?
He is replacing John Blay, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you, I have no other questions.
I have none.
There's no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's request based on approval of, of the Indiana perf.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
Great, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Go ahead, Chief.
Would like to thank Dan McMillan, the Clerk Treasurer. He's been working diligently, ensuring all of our salaries, the Fire Department, are complete, up to date. We did find a mistake on Damon Fine's original letter that he caught for me, and we were able to take care of that before this meeting tonight, so I greatly appreciate the work coming out of his office.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
The last order of business is request for Beautify Beach Grove's Second Annual Walk. Jim, are you gonna, do you want to present this? Here's the letter.
If you can go off of that.
My name is Jim Kaufman, Beautify Beach Grove. Last year, we had our first walk, went well, we had about sixty or seventy people, and this year, we're looking to do our second annual walk, 5K, we want to start at the park. We'd like to do it on May 31st, 2014. We'll start at the main shelters and wind through the City of Beach Grove and finish at the main shelters in the park. We are anticipating approximately one hundred to one hundred and fifty participants. Beautify Beach Grove Committee has applied for one-day event insurance, and we have been in contact with Chief Schwartz, Park Director Tom Hannan, Chief Cheshire, and they're all aware of our plans for this event. The Police Department is going to provide traffic safety, and the Fire Department will be on standby in the case there are needed. Thank you for your consideration.
Floor is open for questions or comments?
I'll make a comment. I participated last year, it was a really, it was a fun time. All sites are all different ages, and, you know, kids and older folks, and moms pulling wagons with kids, it was a really good time, so I would encourage everyone to.
Yes, it was very good. It was a little cold last year, but not much we could have done about that.
Did you get warmed up after the?
Yes, yes.
The first eighth of a mile?
And this year, we should be able to go down Main Street, which will make it even more enjoyable, I think, because last year, we weren't able to because of the construction, but this year, our plan is to go down Main Street, so.
All right, thank you, Jim. If there's no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the request of Beautify Beach Grove to conduct a walk contingent on presentation, presentation of insurance, holding the City of Beach Grove as additional insured, and approval of the Parks Board.
Make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. That concludes new business. Comments from board members?
I have none tonight.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:26 PM. We will meet again in these chambers on Monday, March the 3rd.
Oh, wait a minute, that's not right, is it?
Yeah, Monday, March the 3rd. Nope, Tuesday, February 17th, I'm thinking of the Council, 2014, sorry. And the Council will convene at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Is that, how I'm going to affect anything? Can you hear it back there?
Found the culprit.
Be a much more pleasant meeting.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our City Council meeting for Monday, February the 3rd, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each council member to introduce himself, beginning on my far right.
Dave Mobley, City Councilor Large.
John Jennings, District Four.
Dave Harrison, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District Three.
Ed Bell, District Two.
Mary Huser Stewart, District One.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council. At this time, we have a special presentation from Judge Wells on the city court. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Hope you are all staying warm and making sure your driveways are shoveled and all that good stuff. As I've done last, last year, and my first couple months in, I just wanted to provide you guys with some information on the last of 2013, kind of a year in review. I had a presentation, this in a PowerPoint, I was going to project it, but today became a little bit of a roller coaster, so I wasn't able to get that equipment over here, so. But I printed out the presentation, so I'll, I'll kind of go through and explain what's all in here and get everyone up to speed with where we sit. 2013, on page one, 2013 case filings, we had a drastic increase, this in 2013, we had forty-six hundred, over forty-six hundred cases filed. The reasoning behind this was mainly because of the interlocal agreements that we had reached with, the Council entered in with, the other excluded cities in Marion County, namely, the Town of Speedway, City of Lawrence, and the City of Southport. The, those relationships started, well, excuse me, Southport started in 2012, so this was the first full year that they had been utilizing the city court. Speedway and Lawrence both started in the middle of the year, so I expect to see those relationships expand in the coming year. As you can see, Speedway files both moving violations and code enforcement citations. The City of Lawrence is currently just filing their code enforcement citation, so there's options for them to, there's areas for them to expand if they so choose, but under the, under the agreements, they're allowed to utilize with what, as little or as much as they, they see fit. The next page is simply a graph showing the last three years, the number of cases that are filed, so you can kind of get, get an idea of how much of an increase we've seen in the last year. 2011 is that first bar, so that would have been the last year of Judge Hunter's term, and the next bar is the first year of my term. So as you can see, as those agreements and relationships have come in to play, the volume has increased rather drastically, which is a good thing, so. The next page is just a nutshell of the dispersments, and I've got the rest of the figures, all the details in the, at the end of this, but the 2013 dispersments, total dispersments were just over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, which is a substantially large increase from 2012. Just some highlights, the deferrals, I think it's always interesting to see the deferrals, and just for a refresher, a deferral is when parties enter into an agreement before it goes to trial, to, basically, they're, they pay a higher fee and enter into what's called a safe driver deferral program, where they promise to not have any more infractions or issues for six months or a year, depending on what the agreement is, and they pay a, a higher cost for that. Beach Grove, as you can see, had just under eight thousand dollars for the year 2013. Speedway, I thought this was interesting, Speedway, who'd only been using us for six months, had just under twenty thousand dollars in deferrals, so they were, they were really pushing those. And then Southport was in for a full year, about twenty thousand, which is a pretty good number for them, since considering how small they are. But those cities make those a priority. Obviously, they get a higher take off that than if they just do a ticket, and that's their prerogative, that, under the state law, that's, they're allowed to do that, so. And it's good for us, because it limits court time and resources if people are entering into deferrals, so it's not mandatory, but it's, if parties are interested, it's definitely an option for them. The net to Beach Grove, so as you'll see, that, that number, the total dispersments, all those monies go to, statutorily, to different areas, so we had a drastic increase to get up to that four hundred and fifty, and the net to Beach Grove, after everything's paid out to varying entities, was just over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which was a substantial increase from 2012 as well. And as I said, extensive details are in the back, and I'll get to those, and I'll walk you through those a little bit. As you can see, the, oh, my graph's a little bit, there should be dollar signs on the, on the left-hand side, but as you can see, that kind of gives you a representation of where we were the two years before. 2012, we were about two hundred and seventy-five thousand total dispersments, and, and as you would figure, that carries along with the volume of, of work we're doing. And the reason you're going to see a, a bigger, how do I want to, how do I want to phrase this, the, there's a drastic increase in the total dispersments, and, and a, a healthy increase in the net to Beach Grove, but Beach Grove gets a smaller take for a case when it's filed by a Speedway, or a Lawrence, or a Southport, or the State of Indiana, where if it's a, if it's a Beach Grove local code, then Beach Grove would receive more monies, or if it's a Beach Grove local deferral, they would receive more monies. So if that volume increases, that's where you're going to see a much larger increase in the, that hundred and sixteen thousand dollar number. Excuse me, the next page is kind of, I wanted to give you an idea of where we're headed in 2014. Obviously, we're going to continue servicing the interlocal agreements. Thought it was interesting, the, on the agenda last month was the Beach Grove Public Safety Program. The court is, is behind this, obviously, it's a, this is, this, this is one of the things cities can do when they have a court, is get creative with different kind of ordinances, and the City Council can implement programs such as that, because you have an air, a place where you can get quick enforcement in a city court. I know part of the reason Speedway and Lawrence reached out to us to utilize our court was because they don't have that option, so while they were trying to increase their code enforcement and implement programs such as this, they didn't really have anywhere to file their cases and really get a resolution to people that scoffed at their tickets, so I think this, I think this is a good, good thing for the city to do, and you wouldn't be able to effectively do anything like that if you didn't have a court, so it's, I think it's innovative and, and a good idea. I had a conversation with the mayor a couple weeks ago, and we talked about compliance cases, it's my understanding that the city is looking to hire a compliance officer in the next few months, and, and again, that's, we do that for Speedway and Lawrence and the other, other excluded cities, so it'll be, it'll be perfect venue for the City of Beach Grove to utilize us for those as well, and it's, again, that's another thing you can, a city can do when they have a city. they have a city court, is they can get quick resolution to compliance issues, or, you know, if you have problem properties, or people that have problem animals, and, you know, a myriad of things. If you have people that are habitually violating the city code, usually it isn't beneficial to the city's assessed value or quality of life and things like that, and that's a major component of what a city court can be utilized to help assist when the governmental entities are trying to improve the quality of life in the city. I had a conversation with Craig a few weeks ago about just ordinance revisions. Are there any ordinances in the, in the statute, or, excuse me, are there any state statutes that we should have local ordinances that mirror or are similar to, so we can enforce here, file them here, and they're under our control and not necessarily under the State of Indiana? So we've had some preliminary conversations about what changes would need to be made, what could be implemented. Obviously, the city council would be involved in that. You would need to pass a local, any local ordinances that would need to be revised. There are a few that I know of offhand. I know there's been some research done, so hopefully, in the next six months or year, we can make any necessary changes that need to be made, and again, as I, it's been a theme, we can get quick resolution and keep it under city control when it's a local ordinance and you have a city court, so I think it's a, it's a good benefit. Finally, we are working on, let's see, early 2012, we switched over to the new computer system, which puts a lot of the case management online, so we've been working on updating our system in the last two months to make it more, more of a user interface where parties can go on and file a motion to the court electronically and get more information online, so they don't have to pick up the phone or they don't have to drive to the court. It's easier on our staff that way, and it's also, I think, easier on the user if that information is easily accessed through that. So we're still working on that, that should be done here soon, and we'll make sure that's available on the website and all that stuff, so people can go through that avenue if they choose. Now, all the old-fashioned ways of mail and phone and all that will still be available, and people will still utilize it, which is fine, but it just gives us another tool on our tool chest. And then the last two pages are, and sorry, I didn't get this condensed onto one page, but basically, this is where every dollar goes, so, oh, well, that's 2012 on that first page, sorry, the last two pages are 2013. But you can compare 2012 and 2013 and see what's increased, what's decreased. The column all the way to the left will be your gross dispersment, so that's every dollar that came in, and then it breaks down per month across where it goes. Just some things that might raise questions, the large increase on, in May and November, that's when we make our state payment, so the state only accepts dispersments twice a year. So while that money is being collected in January, February, March, and other months, it doesn't really get reported on a dispersment level until it goes out to the state, so that's why you see a drastic increase from, say, in April, you have $17,000, to May, you have $90,000. That's what that is, and you can see that as it goes out to the State of Indiana dispersment on the fourth column. Don't know if there's really anything else on this that, on this chart that I need to point out, but it's all there, all the numbers and all this, and every month, we send a file to Dan and report, so that's basically, I've just taken all those 12 reports and condensed them into this table. There were, there were two other things I wanted to mention earlier, and I skipped over it. On the deferrals, it's, I thought it was interesting that we actually just did our January 2014 numbers today, so I'm not sure if we send them up to you today, or if they'll be in there in the morning, but we just finished those this afternoon. Deferrals for Beach Grove, the month of January 2014 was already almost $2,500, so if you look at, it was just under $8,000 for 2013. I think that's a pretty good jump for just one month of the current year. And then the other was, for January 2014, we've had 330 cases filed in January, which I know if you're thinking, okay, take that times 12, that's not quite what they had last year, but January, historically, January, February, March, not so much March, but January, February usually are really low case filings, because law enforcement, I don't know, I'm not, this isn't a bad thing, but usually in winter, we see a decrease, and then it ticks back up as spring comes up, so I'm sure the weather and things like that, holidays, play a factor into why that reduces. So that's not a, I'm not trying to say anything negative against the police department by any means, that's just the pattern, so, but 330 is a very strong number for a January filing, so I thought that was interesting, wanted to point that out. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time. Yeah, Craig?
Yeah, I know we want to encourage deferrals. It looks like we're out of whack when you compare this to Speedway and Southport, especially with the size and number of filings. Is there anything our officers or we can do to increase that number?
Well, I think, one thing that the, there's two answers to that question. The first is, the city prosecutor, the last few months, has started meeting with all the parties who show up for court beforehand to discuss deferrals. I think that's why you've seen an increase this month especially. A lot of times, I think people don't know that's an option, or don't understand why it's a good option, because it costs more than just paying your ticket. It's not substantially more, but it costs more. The other thing, too, is I'm really handicapped, because I can't sell a deferral. The deferral is between the city, the town, the state, and the party, and I'm the arbiter of their dispute, so I can't really sell them on settling one way or another, that's their option. I let them know it's available if they want to talk about it, but I can't really, you know, negotiate with them, that's up to the city to do that. So there's been, I've noticed that the city prosecutor has pushed that recently, and I think that's why you've seen an increase. The second part to that is when you write a ticket on a state infraction and that ticket gets deferred, all that money, and when I say all that money, it's a little over $140, that goes to the state. When it's written on a local Beach Grove code, it goes to Beach Grove. So where you see Southport and Speedway have higher numbers, they don't, they don't file any infractions here. It's, all the cases they file are all local ordinances, so whenever they do a deferral, it all goes back to them. And when we write tickets, we have a healthy number of state infractions that come in, and that's for different reasons. Like I said, there's probably some codes that need switched over, and I know that the police department works a lot of the traffic safety program in Marion County, which puts them outside of the city limits of Beach Grove. When they're outside of Beach Grove, they can't write a Beach Grove local ordinance, so those were, those are two things to answer your question. Any more questions?
Andy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Oh, and I have extra copies of this if anybody wants.
Move on to reading of the minutes. Council, you've been presented, printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated January 21st. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
There's only one, it's very small, that I, so, I'll just, the next meeting, Monday, February 2nd. Can fix that easy enough.
I have read and understand the council meeting minutes from Monday, January 21st, 2014. I motion that they are accepted as amended with the date being changed.
I second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Move on to petitions or comments by citizens. No one has signed up to speak this evening. We will move to reports from committees, boards, and commissions. Greenscape Commission, Tim?
Good evening. Tim Latimer, Beach Grove, Greenscape Commission. I did not give a report in January, and at my December report, during my December report, I promised to get back to you on the trees and shrubs that we have on Main Street. We have on Main Street, the trees that are planted, the trees and shrubs that are planted on Main Street include red oaks, black tupulos, honey locusts, zelkovas, ginkgo males, arborvitae and yews. That's, so next time somebody asks, you can, and I'll email these to you.
No soft maples?
No, no silver maples. I promise that. And speaking of the trees on Main Street, we will do an inventory of those trees as soon as the leaves come out, and we'll add them to our inventory. We will also update our tree inventory this spring. Some trees have been removed, as you know, some new trees have been planted, so we'll update our inventory this year. There are still four trees that are too close to fire hydrants on Main Street, and these are in violation of city ordinance. At least two trees have been removed from Main Street, and they were replanted at Central Elementary. Dave Miller at our last meeting, Dave Miller shared plans, you may already know about this, but I'll present it anyway. Dave Miller shared plans for a living sanctuary garden that's going to be installed on the grounds of the Benedictine Center. This is with help from a grant from Keep Indianapolis Beautiful. The garden will feature native plants, flowers, grasses, trees, benches, and ADA compliant pathways. Dave Miller also wanted me to mention tonight, to suggest to all the residents, all residents should inspect their trees on their property for limb damage from the hard winter weather. This should be done before the trees leaf out. It's much easier to see those branches up there. My yard, speaking of the silver maples, my yards have great big branches that have just fallen down, and I haven't gotten out there to really inspect yet, but I've, I've got a mess, and I'm sure there are a lot of homes that do. We want to remind everybody that personal safety is very important, and when determining if a homeowner can remove limbs themselves, or whether they should hire a tree service professional, a good rule of thumb is, if your feet have to leave the ground to use a chainsaw, call a professional. That may not sound like any fun, but that's what you need to do. Let's see. As I reported back in December, we finished reviewing several websites associated with grant opportunities. We will continue to look at those and see if there's anything that any organization in Beach Grove might be interested in some of this grant, some of these grant possibilities, we can help write them. You know, we started looking at these, and so far, we really haven't seen anything that just wows us, but we've got probably about, oh, I don't know, maybe eight or nine that we've narrowed, we had five pages of possible grant options that we all kind of split up and went through and got on the website and looked, and out of those five pages or so, we've got maybe eight or 10 that we'll look into a little bit more deeply and see if they can be of any use to anybody. Arbor Day is April 25th, and let's see, once again, the City of Beach Grove renewed its Tree City status with flying colors, and our next meeting will be February 18th at 6:00, the Hornet Park Community Center. And that's all I have for you. Do you have any questions for me? Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All righty.
RDC?
Joe Griffin, current president of the RDC. Since the last time I was up here to talk to you, I got ahold of some information, sent it into the website. You can go to our homepage, click on the redevelopment information and resources. That'll take you to a new site in which they have combined all of our resources and everything else into one area. I also got links in there to a new one that's got a redevelopment commission and urban redevelopment laws that are current as they stand right now, until this legislature does whatever it does. Hopefully, they'll keep the same links, and hopefully, they'll still work, because one of the big things going on around here is people keep talking, well, this is and that is, and blah, blah, blah. Well, that's one of the biggest misunderstandings that goes on, and that's one of the biggest things I've been fighting, is the misinformation that goes out. Misinformation is harder to take than the true information, so that's why I've always tried to combat it and say, hey, wait a minute, timeout. So there are links to that, laws for the redevelopment commission, and also what an urban commission can do, urban redevelopment, whether it be the council or whomever. Those laws are also out there, too, just to click on them and go, and they're, I say, they're current ones. Hopefully, if anything changes on them, they'll keep the same websites, they'll keep the same links, and replenish them that way, I hope. One of the things I did do, too, was the Marion County Planning Consortium. I went to it, it was about one of the worst ages you could ever expect. For a while there, they thought I was going to be the crowd again, and I told a guy, don't worry, I'm used to being just the crowd, so hang in there and we'll see what happens. As it turned out, as it went on, there was about 30-some people, about 30, show up out of the 40 that they invited, and I have to say, it was very, very interesting. Brad gave a presentation, and I strongly suggest that we get him up here to give that presentation out. It will show you a lot about redevelopment, how it goes on. One of the big things is, is that Marion County has the most jobs, percentage of jobs in the State of Indiana. Also, what it'll show you is, is that we also have the biggest commuters to Marion County, and I'm just going to say right off the top of my head, I'm going to say it's like 37% commute into Marion County for their jobs. And as it was pointed out, in order to make the balanced budget, just to get up here for, to get the 100 cops out that they're looking for in Indianapolis, and to balance out all public safety in Marion County, they pointed out that we needed 50,000 jobs, making at least $50,000. I'm going to tell you what, out of that 37, almost 37%, we could easily do that. And one of the things they're pointing out is, is we are losing out on development, and they showed a graph where it's going down. Marion County at one time was up there, and as they pointed out, we kind of started resting on our laurels. We're losing out to Fishers, Greenwood, Avon, Carmel, and one of the big reasons they pointed out was, is these communities are out marketing themselves. We're not. We have no plans, nothing definite that we can get up there and get going with. One of the things that they wanted to point out, too, is that this commission was not going to be sitting back and resting on their laurels. They were going to plan, and then they were going to act. Right now, they're still in the process of trying to figure out who's what and where, and they want to keep the group kind of small, small but vital to the key groups involved. I brought up a statement, I made a statement when, you know, it had the most exceptions to people out there. I think out of the 30-some people, about 20-some of them took big exception of what I said. However, as the other cities got talking, they were more or less heckling what I did. And then the one taking the most exception, four of them in particular were taking some big exceptions, and I was getting potshot all through that. And as the other excluded cities started talking, they were basically saying pretty much kind of what I was saying. At the end of it, these gentlemen got up here and says, you know something? If this committee is going to do what we want to do, people best be ticked, and we best be ready to hear the truth, and they thanked me. You know, they said, I'm sorry for taking exception, that's what we're here for. We need to keep people ticked. Otherwise, we haven't done our job, otherwise, we're not looking at exactly what is and what isn't. We can't close our eyes to that, you know? Basically, what they're thinking about doing now is breaking everybody up into five committees and then take off from there and go, as it stands right now, but it's still open. They're going to have a website, they do have a website right now, it's called plan2020.com, and as things get going, they're going to start putting it in there. They'll start making known what's going on and what the progressions are and everything else, but I strongly recommend that get Brad up here to give that presentation on the economic development. He's more than happy to give it, and you'll see some very startling, startling facts going on in Marion County. Also, you know, I was bringing that up at our last RDC meeting. Also, you know, I was bringing that up at our last RDC meeting, and it basically brought up some conversation there, especially by one commissioner. And when you look at the comments that was being made by that commissioner, basically, I'm a pain in the butt. You know? What I, what I do is I get up there and I speak, and, you know, you can say whatever you want about what's considered the original RDC members, but there's one thing you could do. You could talk redevelopment to them. And there's one thing you can't say about them is, is that they actually spend a lot of time, their own time, getting out there and researching and taking a lot of that stuff under the belt and running with it. It took a lot of their personal time and effort to get up and get going, whether you like it or not. They did put the time and effort in and you can talk redevelopment. With the current redevelopment commission, it's tough to talk redevelopment because they're so new. So, I try to pull them up to speed and stuff is taken, taken away, I guess you can say. So, you know, it's tough trying to bring some, some stuff up. And especially when you're trying to point some stuff out, because redevelopment is a very complicated issue. Redevelopment has a lot of stuffs going up and down. And as I pointed out to the council, what, two, three, four times, before we stubbed our toes, I brought up issues that were redevelopment issues in which we had to reconsider, and thank God we did, otherwise, we wouldn't stub our toes and go on from that point. Because redevelopment is up there and we've got to be on cue with our redevelopment, because that's very essential on what's carried out there. And especially when we have the great opportunity that we have for this Plan 2020. You know, I hear a lot of people talking a lot of stuff, like I said, it sounds, it sounds good if you're sitting around. The problem is, it's factoids. You know, it sounds like it should be a fact, you think it is a fact when in fact, it isn't. And that's what's going to get us, get us caught. We have a lot of stuff that they're bringing together. What they're doing down there is very, very good. We have a chance to really be in on the ground floor on a lot of things coming our way, a lot of resources coming our way. And as most of you know, the ones doing the key people in redevelopment, they don't want their name, name being known, they just run behind the scenes and keep going. But there's one thing they don't like either, they don't like factoids. They like you up and running and they like you going. So, that is some of the key stuff that you've got to get going and you've got to take care of. Otherwise, you're left behind. You know, there's one thing we can't do is turn our back on Indianapolis, just because it says Indianapolis from Marion County. We need it. Because one thing that one of them pointed out is, is one of the excluded cities said, hey, look, I understand what's going on, but we did take advantage of what was made apparent to us, the resources. To which Beech Grove sure has it, because of the directions and choices we have made from other ones. We can change some of that stuff and we get some of those resources, things back in. And that's part of what this is, to, to get going there.
You could wrap up, Joe.
Okay. Any questions?
Questions for RDC?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Joe.
The Public Safety Committee did not meet due to the weather. The ABC did have a hearing, but, was supposed to have a hearing, but it was canceled, so there's nothing to report there. We'll go to financial with the clerk treasurer.
City of Beech Grove Financial Report for the year 2013. The city website continues to grow and is a great source of information for the citizens of Beech Grove. This year, a document center has been added, which provides easy access to minutes, financial reports and more. The website remains staffed by volunteers and the nominal fee for the website continues to be paid for by a local business, which results in a cost to the taxpayer of zero. Thanks so much to these wonderful volunteers, I appreciate very much their service to our city. The Main Street project is almost completely paid for. Crossroads Engineering has informed me that we should only have a couple of invoices still to come. We ended December 31st, 2013 with a balance in the corporation account of $1,618,374.19. I only mention this because when we took office on January 3rd, 2012, the city had ended December 31st, 2011 with a $219,725.85 balance in the corporate bank account. That balance was less than the cost of one payroll. The city does not have an excess of funds, but I do feel that we are getting closer to providing the citizens and employees a city which is on financially stable ground. The recommendation for a budget our size is that we maintain a 15% reserve in our bank account at all times. That would be $1.6 million, and it's to that goal that we are working. Our 2014 tax anticipation warrant is $2,158,492, which is approximately $130,000 less than 2013. The budget for 2014 is approximately $10,800,000. That is an increase of less than $300 from 2013, yet we added many improvements. I have highlighted a few below. We've increased funds in the local roads and streets budget for paving and street repairs. Funding for sidewalks using matching 8020 Safe Ride to School Grant, which we are partnering with Beech Grove City Schools, who are splitting the cost of the project. Funding to replace street and informational signs throughout the city using the 9010 Sign Replacement Grant. Funding for the lease purchase of four new vehicles for each of the Fire Department and Police Department. Funding for the lease purchase of a skid steer for Department of Public Works. Funding for a position for a compliance officer. Funding for a sanitary stormwater supervisor, Field Organist. Increased funds for sewage projects from $200,000 to $290,000. Increased funds for overtime for fire and police from $50,000 to $100,000 for each department. That is the larger improvements. There are many smaller improvements that are not listed above. The clerk's office implemented a new accounting software program in April of 2013. It tracks transactions in real time and is a huge asset to the city in documentation of financial records. A huge improvement was seen in our State Board of Accounts Audit, which is available online at www.beechgrove.com. We hired Jeff Peters' firm to work with us to resolve issues pertaining to the Main Street loans. We now have spreadsheets that are accurate and up to date. Our city attorney has been actively pursuing delinquent Main Street loans in an effort to bring them current per State Board of Accounts Audit. The Main Street Loan Program was negatively reported on the State Board of Accounts Audits for a number of years and accurate records were not kept. Lastly, kudos to the department heads serving the city of Beech Grove who make every effort to work within the budgets they are giving. They do a nice job serving the citizens of Beech Grove and watching out for our taxpayer dollars. We appreciate very much their service to our city. Respectfully, Dan McMillan.
Questions or comments for the clerk?
I just want to say, good job, Dan.
Thank you.
I think everything's pretty straightforward there and, and language that we can all understand and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, the questions, we'll move to youth counsel, Mike. Before you start, Mike, counsel, this was a ordinance, as a result of an ordinance that you passed last year, either last year or the end of 2012, and I think Councilor Davidson was the author of it. And it was to get input from the youth in the city of Beech Grove. Mike serves on a group at the high school. I approached Steve Cox to ask for them to start reporting, and then that will lead into the nuts and bolts of the ordinance. I won't get into that tonight, but Mike, I appreciate you coming. And Mike is, Mike's dad is John Jennings, Counselor District Four. And Mike is, I'm really impressed by Mike at Beech Grove High School, and he's got a younger sister that is just as impressive as Mike is. And, and when I found out that Mr. Cox was going to send Mike over, it was very gratifying. So, Mike, good to see you and take off.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off by introducing myself and talk a little bit about the Student Leadership Team, which is what we're calling ourselves. My name is Michael Jennings. Like Mayor Buckley said, I'm a senior at Beech Grove High School and I am involved in basketball and I'm also on the academic team. So, the Student Leadership Team was like composed to try to better the school. Like, the administration felt that to better the school, they needed the input of the students because we know what needs to be done, what need, what might need to be changed and what's going good, like from a student's perspective. There are 16 students, four students from each class, representing the co-curricular, extracurricular and club activities. One of our big focuses is to try and get students to become more involved. So, how can we get basketball players to go to choir events, or how can we get band members to go to a soccer match or something like that? And we, this past weekend, we had BG Idol, which was a choir and band showcase. And this past weekend, it was, fourth place was Delaney Mitchell, and she sang On My Own. Third place was Michaela Williver, and she sang Lego House. Second place was Stephanie Volmer, dancing to Mirror. And first place was Jimmy Geiger, playing the piano and singing to I Won't Give Up. This show was put on by teachers Andrew Bush and Lauren Baker, and we even had some alumni play in the show. And it just, choir and band is very celebrated at the high school, and that was demonstrated this weekend. Also, this weekend, we had a lot of athletics in play. The wrestlers had sectionals. We had four, five wrestlers advance out of the sectional. Freshman Cody Conway with the fourth place finish, junior Evan Smiley finished third, junior Nick Pleider bought home a second place finish, and senior David Sonrock finished fourth. And also, Demonte Dawkins won the sectional, so all five of them will advance to the regional tournament, which is, I believe, next weekend. And also, this weekend, the basketball team defeated Lutheran, Varsity JV, and the freshmen won a conference invitational tournament this weekend. They beat Lutheran and Triton Central. In the pool, the Hornets hosted the Beech Grove Swim Invite, and they included Cascade, Park Tudor, Mount Vernon and Sessina. Both the boys and girls team competed very hard, many finishes were tightly contested. Victories included Allen Mayer in the 50 Free, Villis Fish Collins in the 500 Free. Reece Johnson brought home two victories, winning the 200 Free and the 100 Breaststroke. And the boys team will be in action tomorrow night at Cascade. And this Thursday is the girls' senior night for girls' basketball. And like I said earlier, one of the big parts of, that we're trying to accomplish in this student leadership meeting is to try and get more students involved in more events. And so, like we've done contests to see who can follow the theme, we have theme nights for sporting events, so who can follow the theme best, and they'll get a gift card to B-Dubs or whatever. And there's been games at halftime, like we had a tug of war game a few, few games ago, and just stuff like that, to try and get more people to come to events and show more school spirit. And I think that's one thing that, I mean, any school can work on. So, lastly, I'd like to talk about the Students of the Month from the high school. From January, Student of the Month was Bree Spurgeon, and she'll be recognized at the February school board meeting. And Reece Johnson, who I mentioned as a swimmer, has been named the Edwards Jones Investment Scholar-Athlete of the Month for this past January as well. So, I think both of them are going to be honored in the school board meeting. And then, lastly, the creation of the District School Community Council, which was founded by Dr. Kaiser, is, their, their first meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 18th, and is composed of 50 families, 10 from each building, just to try to generate more ideas from the parents' perspective. And I'm not very well informed on that, but I would like to answer questions that any of you have about anything I've talked about, or just questions in general.
Yeah, Thursday night, you say it was the girls' senior?
Yeah, girls' senior night. We have three seniors this year, Shannon Neworth, Kayla Kaiser and Taylor Peavy.
So, are they having a game Thursday?
Yes, yes. I believe it's in between the JV and varsity game is when they'll do all the senior nights and like the festivities, they'll walk out.
What, six?
The JV game starts at six, so probably about seven o'clock will be the senior night festivities. So, any other questions?
I have a question about, you mentioned the community council or whatever it is where you're trying to get five families from five...
The creation of the District School Community Council, and as I said, I'm not very well informed on this. Dr. Kaiser created this. It's 50 families and 10 from each building, so Hornet Park, Central, South Grove and Middle School and High School. And the first meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 18th, and that is about all the information I've received on that. So...
Is that open to anyone?
I believe so. I really don't know.
It is basically a, trying to get more of the families involved that have kids in multiple classes. They're trying to see what the parents want from the school. So, I, I know that they had approached quite a few people, but I'm sure there's always room for more people and more input.
If anybody remembers Mike, that's why I want to focus on the youth and see what's out, what's happening out there and what can we provide to them and what are they looking for that they're not getting and keeping them on the right path. So, I, that sounds very intriguing to me.
And I think, this is the first year for the Student Leadership Team, but I think it's a good idea and, I mean, just like getting, like I said, it was created to generate like ideas from the students about what we can be done at the high school specifically, like to create better opportunities for us and what the students see need changed. Like, we've talked about dress code, things of that nature, so...
Do you think there should be a dress code implemented?
We've talked about it, and as a student, I'm going to say no, as most students would, but there are some issues that need to be resolved in the dress code. So, we, we've started talking about that and other things, so...
You say you play basketball?
I do.
How'd you do against Lutheran?
Personally, or...
Yes.
Personally, I played all right, not up to my standards. I'm pretty hard on myself, but...
Have you ever played up to your standards?
No.
Okay.
And we won the game, so that's most important.
There you go.
Mike, he played very good.
Mike, is there any chance I could have a copy of your notes there?
Yes, 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 yes.
It would help me during the minutes.
John, is this going to take the place of your basketball report?
It sure is.
All right, any other questions for Mike?
Thank you, good job. Very good job.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on, the mayor's liaison is not with us this evening. Under unfinished business carried over from previous meeting, council, it's council president appointment for 2014. At the last meeting, two folk, two people were nominated, Councilor Davidson and Councilor Bell. Tied, and I did not vote, I abstained, and it was tabled to this evening. So, what I would like to do tonight is to begin the process anew. So, at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for council president.
I nominate Mr. Davis.
I nominate Ed Bell.
Is there any other nominations? Move that the nominations be closed. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye? To close, then we will vote either for Councilor Davidson or Councilor Bell by voice. Starting on my left.
Councilor Bell.
Myself. Councilor Bell.
Anthony Davidson.
Anthony Davis.
What's the vote?
Four to three.
Four to three for Councilor Bell?
For Councilor Bell.
Okay, he will be council president till the first of 2015.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you.
We'll move on to RDC appointment for 2014. I will defer to the council president.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you once again for vote confidence. Tonight, we have RDC appointments to consider. We have two current members that we should continue. Names Joe Griffin and Donald Webb. We have one other person tonight that I want to introduce, and he, he would like to be considered for the RDC. His name is Terry Delmar. He lives at, on North 4th?
North 4th, Buffalo Corner.
On the corner. And I believe that everyone have a chance to... And I believe, uh, that everyone have a chance to interview him, talk to him?
Yes.
Talk to him, okay, alright. Um, what we'll do is, uh, we'll each voting, vote for two, voice vote, and we'll start with, uh, Jeffy. It'll be, uh, Donald Webb, Joe Griffin, or Terry Bellner.
Okay. I vote for Terry Bellner and, um, Webb, Mr. Webb.
I'll vote for Terry Bellner and Joe Griffin.
I will go with, uh, Terry Bellner and Donald Webb.
Terry and Donald.
I too will vote for Terry and Donald.
Joe and Donald.
I vote for Terry and Donald.
I come up with, uh, Terry Bellner and, uh, Donald Webb.
How do you spell your last name?
Bellner.
Could you, uh, say the vote, clerk?
Okay, um, I had Terry Bellner as... Seven. Donald Webb as five, and Joe Griffin as two.
That's incorrect.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
There's only seven of us. Terry, six.
Okay.
I had six also.
Alright, the five and two, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Terry Bellner and Donald Webb will serve, uh, as the council appointments on the RDC for two thousand and fourteen.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
And what we will do now, uh, next order of business is Resolution Number One, two thousand and fourteen, RDC, RDC appointment, and I will defer to the clerk to read the resolution.
Resolution Number One, twenty fourteen, is a resolution presented to the mayor and the common council to fill positions on the redevelopment commission as required by Indiana state statute. Whereas, a redevelopment commission has been established by the common council of the city of Beach Grove, and whereas, from time to time, commissioners re- resign their position, and often, the timeframe between appointments and end of terms cause confusion. And whereas, it is recommended that appointments such as these be made on an annual basis to minimize confusion, and whereas, the mayor and the common council shall appoint new commissioners and/or reaffirm current commission members for a period of one year. Therefore, be it ordained that the mayor appoints the following citizens to the redevelopment commission for a period of one year commencing upon approval of the resolution, Ron Moat, Kathy Chapel, and Janice King. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following citizens be appointed to the redevelopment commission for a period of one year commencing upon approval of this resolution, Donald Webb and Terry Bellner. Therefore, be it ordained that this resolution only applies for the appointments to the redevelopment commission and no other commission or board. Therefore, be it further ordained that this resolution shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Comments or questions? If not, ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number One, two thousand and fourteen.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, council. Last order of unfinished business is General Ordinance Number Two, or Number One, two thousand and fourteen, is up for second reading only. Ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number... Number One, two thousand and fourteen, on second reading only.
I'll pass, I would, I motion that we pass General Ordinance Number One.
Don't mind, I have an amendment.
I think now would be a great time for an amendment.
Um, I spoke with, uh, Charlie Pride at the, uh, State Board of Accounts, and, uh, he, um... I didn't have time to pass this out. But he had reviewed the ordinance, and, um, he said everything looks good with one exception, and I would like to add that exception at this time. And, uh, under, just under a, a general sentence under, um, the Beach Grove's Public Safety Program under the chapter, that the common council hereby establishes the Beach Grove's Public Safety Program as set forth herein. So, that's, that's it.
Ask for a motion to approve the resol, or the amendment?
I'll make said motion to approve the amendment.
I'll second it.
I'm, uh, confused. I talked to Todd Austin, the Speaker of the Council, and he, he had the concern about the monies not being through, prior to this.
Charlie Pride's had no objection to that. He's, that's who I talked to.
And I would also like to, uh, add that, too. I talked to Todd Austin, and Todd Austin told me there was no way that, uh, that what, the way that read that it would be right.
I'd say Charlie Pride's been there for a while, so I would...
So has Todd Austin.
Trust him.
They're both supervisors at the State Board of Accounts. So, uh, I'm just telling you, I talked to the man, Ed Bell talked to him, and so, uh, there's a conflict there.
Okay, well, it's up for second reading, so we'll have council...
Are we, what, what are we questioning? Are they saying that this is, is not legal?
Yes.
Craig?
Well, I mean...
It's up for second reading, so what I would suggest is us passing it, and it'll have time for Craig to...
The issue is, my understanding is, one of them is not a budget item, is that what it is?
That's correct. There's no appropriation whatsoever for this to happen.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to do some more investigating on this. Apparently, there's a split of authority here. I mean, I, I don't wanna sit here and tell you one person's right, one person's wrong, so, if Councilor Davidson is correct, we're on second reading, so...
This is second reading, yes.
We got third reading next month.
I, I will say this, I'm a little skeptical, 'cause it's not a budget item, it's my understanding, but, I, let me do some, let me look into this a little further.
I motion we accept this on second reading with the ability to...
There's an amendment on the floor that has been introduced in second.
Correct.
And I'll ask for a, uh, I'll need to take a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The amendment passes.
Amendment passes, thank you.
Certification, please? The amendment creates this council, or whatever we're calling it, this...
No, the ordinance creates the council. The council is trying to amend the ordinance to, uh, clarify it.
It's a name. I mean, there's a difference between, we can create whatever we want, but can we fund it? Is that the question we're looking at? Is that really bottom line?
It's already funded, because we getting the money from, we're just moving money from the deferral program to this fund, so it, I mean, the, the funds are already there.
It is not funded. That is incorrect. This is not funded, that's the problem. State statute does not allow you to just move funds because you want to, and that's what Todd Austin had a problem with.
I a hundred percent disagree with that.
Well...
And I'll leave it at that.
And I understand, I'm just one of the, I, all we're doing tonight is voting to continue the ordinance with the creation of it, the, I can't remember what we're calling it. The funding for that program...
Is what is in question.
Is that question, where is, where are those funds coming from? Because I, at one point, I thought it said general fund. And, so that's where I'm confused. It doesn't say, I mean, it ta, it talks about the deferral program ongoing and, and being self-funding and so on and so forth, but the initial creation talked about, like, a, I'm, for lack of a better word, donation from the general fund.
Right.
Which, that's what's in question, cor- correct, Craig?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, Todd?
Can I add, maybe, I think I might be able to help out a little bit, if that's acceptable, is that okay? There's a lot of different things you can do, um, in this area. If you need to create another fund, if you need to put a sixty-day, six-month, year, wait on it to accumulate the money, deferral money comes in on a monthly basis, and we have no idea how much that's gonna be. That could be, and you can look from the chart that I submitted from the numbers from the last two years. One month that, like, last month, it was twenty-five-hundred dollars, the next month it could be two-hundred-and-thirty, or two-hundred-and-twenty-three, which would be just one deferral. I mean, that could, it varies drastically, so, um, you're not gonna be able to account specifically how much is coming in. So, if you wanted to create a specific fund that went tied directly to the program, I could imagine you, um, could do that and then fund it, and then earmark that money for then funding in two thousand and fifteen. Or, I'm, there's, I guess what I'm getting at is there's creative ways you can do this, and it seems to me that the option seems to either be, it's this, or it's this, I talked to this person, I talked to that person, this person said that, this person did that, the, none of them are lawyers, um, by the way, so, um... While they, they do know the state budget, I will give them that, and I call Charlie Pride quite a lot to make sure I'm doing everything financially correctly. Um, I would just encourage you to maybe investigate if there's a creative solution, or maybe, um, if there's another approach to the actual funding language. From what I've been told, that, uh, is close, so, um, but again, I don't know. I'm not a counselor, and I'm, don't work for State Board of Accounts, just legally from what I've seen, that's my two cents. Also, I, I, from a citizen's standpoint, I would like to add, this program, I think, or something similar to it, is necessary. I, where I live, on Twelfth Avenue, we have had, in our neighborhood, the streets up there, a lot of little minor issues. Mary, you've probably heard of, uh, a few of them, break-ins, cars being broken into on the streets, people knocking on doors and trying to come in back doors and things like that. This program is, from what I've been told, and from what I've heard about it, is gonna be to help increase police presence in the neighborhoods where they're driving and looking and watching. That's exactly what we need as a citizen. With a wi, with a wife and two kids home every day by themselves, I'm not really encouraged by when I see someone posting on Facebook that people were going around Twelfth Avenue and Thirteenth Avenue knocking on doors violently during the middle of the day. You know, that is not reassuring. So, I think something like this, maybe not exactly what it says there, but something like this is definitely needed, but that's my two cents as a citizen.
Nobody's arguing the point that it's not...
I, I know, but I just, I, it seems to me that there's a little bit of gridlock here, and it's either my way, or this way, or this way, or that way, and I, I, I think that's not always the case. It seems to me that there might be some, well, hey, why don't we take this and add it here, and maybe delete this here, and then, hey, wait, maybe we have something that works for everybody? But, but again, I'm not a counselor, so I don't wanna impose that on anybody, but...
Question for you.
Yes.
Uh, the simple solution to this is for them to write these under Beach Grove ordinances versus State of Indiana ordinance. Would that not be correct?
I don't know if that is what the intent of the, the main intent of the program is. From what I understand is it's to allow for more, uh, opportunities for overtime to be way, be able to s, provide officers on the street more frequently without having to pull away from the staff that's already being utilized. I, I could be wrong, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I understand, they only have four officers on third shift, is that correct? Normally, four? I mean, I, it, I know enough that, that four people aren't gonna be able to just drive around the neighborhoods all night. There's gonna be runs to go on, and they're gonna be busy and utilized. But if you have, um, an e, an extra revenue stream that can provide overtime opportunities where that officer is signing up to specifically patrol the neighborhoods as part of this program, then they can go out and provide that service without having to pull away from the other matters that are being, um, uh, attended to, and not hiring a whole nother officer, or two officer, or three officer, which is a lot more expensive than five thousand dollars, or twenty-five percent of whatever deferral revenue's coming in.
But, back to the question, if it was wrote under a Beach Grove ordinance, that money would flow back to Beach Grove instead of the State of Indiana?
Co- correct. If the, there's a, on a state, or, excuse me, on a local ticket, the, there's a fine associated, or if it gets deferred, the user fees stay in Beach Grove. But e, even on a state ticket, Beach Grove gets a certain amount of that money. Um, but, uh, it's just greater if it's a local. But not everything can be written on local. You can't take, there are certain state statutes that can't be local ordinances, so those, you, you, you'll, you will always have a certain amount of state codes, tickets, so, I don't know, that's just my two cents, but I think, I, I think you're a little bit more working, you guys can get where you wanna go with this. That's just my two cents.
As a citizen, can I say something?
No.
Oh, okay.
Maybe one way to handle this is, is to make it effective for two thousand and fifteen when it is a budget item.
And I agree with that, that's the whole problem.
Where are we on our point of order?
We are ready to hear it on second reading.
Thank you.
Motion to approve on second reading. Our General Ordinance Number One, two thousand and fourteen, on second reading only.
As amended?
As amended.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it, uh, I didn't hear any opposed. We will hear it on third and final reading at the next meeting.
I have a question. Todd Austin and Charlie Pride both work for the State Board of Accounts?
Correct.
Do they work in the same office?
They do. It's just who they put on the phone when you call there.
Who will be tasked with researching this and coming up with the final?
We have, we have three different people that said they were gonna look into it.
I'll look into it.
Craig, Anthony, and, and, uh, and ours.
I don't think anyone's opposed to that idea.
Correct.
I think it's a good idea, and a good use of time and resources, and it helps the police department, it helps the, it's this money animal fogging.
See, it's not just the five thousand, it's the overtime pay that would come involved, too. Yeah, it is. It would screw up the, am I wrong?
Well, the, the biggest problem is, it raises the budget. You guys as a council passed a budget, and now you're wanting to increase it, and there's no way of increasing it with them funds. The police department may have overtime money, but I don't have five thousand dollars to cede this thing because of the budget you passed.
And I, I get that, I understand, because that's the point I was making, that it's, it's the money that we're, that we're worrying about, we're having an issue with. Where is that money coming from? Is it coming, as, as the judge stated, from the actual deferrals? Let's get some money in the bank, so to speak, then we start the program. The program, let's approve it, it's, it's a good idea, let's do it, but we don't actually staff it until we have money to pay for it.
Well, what I don't understand is how two people can work for the State Board of Accounts, and Ed calls and gets told no, Anthony calls and gets told yeah.
Yeah, I, I can, I...
I mean, and I'm not denying, either one of them got that answer.
It depends on what the question was. I don't know.
Did you present them with this whole thing, Anthony?
I, uh, I called Charlie Pride at first, and then I, and then I said, would it be better just to, just for me to email it to you? And he said, yeah, and I actually have the physical email, it's just I didn't print it.
So, you, did you ask him directly about the five thousand dollars, would it affect...
He looked over the entire ordinance, and he said, I don't see anything wrong with the entire ordinance, with the exception to an estat, an official establishment of the program, which, that's what we amended.
Does he know that was not budgeted, though? Todd Austin is aware of that was not a budgeted item. That's the difference.
Huge, huge...
Our point of order, Mayor? Point of order, can we continue with the meeting?
Mm-hmm. That concludes unfinished business. Uh, there is no new business, uh, for this evening, and we will go to council comments, beginning to, with Dave.
I wanna welcome you to the RDC.
Thank you, proud to be here. Thank you.
Everybody, hello, this is a girls' basketball game Thursday night.
It's a senior night, it's a big deal for those girls.
Right.
Uh, are we done?
Yeah.
April twenty-fifth is Arbor Day, uh, as he said, so I'm sure there's going to be a tree planting. I've been to that a couple of times, uh, it's, uh, to learn how to correctly plant a tree is actually more of an art than what you would assume. Um, and plus, they do a great job, and you're doing it for your city, so it's always something to be good to be involved in. Congratulations to the gentleman on... Congratulations to the gentleman on the RDC. And that's all I have this evening, since Michael stole all my sports scores.
Um...
Good meeting. I enjoyed the youth council. I thought that was a... I really pat John on the back for a son that's well-versed. How many points did he score?
He averages about seven. He got his normal seven. Usually hits two threes and a free throw, but this time it was one three and four three throws. But he gets his... He gets his seven.
Very good.
Anthony?
Actually, I got a few things. I'm glad to hear that we did not... I'm glad to hear the good news about the Main Street loan program, and I'm glad that we did not choose to scrap it when we first got on the council. I know that came through, and I'm glad to hear that we did not get rid of it, because it sounds like it's starting to make sense and to everybody. I'd like to thank Mike Jennings for his comments on the youth board, and what great high school athletics that we have, you know, listening to all these people going to sectionals and regionals, you know, as far as wrestling. The next council meeting, I will be introducing a couple new ordinances. One, an internet policy for the employees of the city, as well as a complete overhaul of the animal code for the city. Much like the one that I did on building permits, it's the entire chapter. We got to changing around one thing, and ended up changing the entire chapter. So it just leads to more work. But congratulations to Terry, and I really hope that we can come to a resolution on this public safety program without getting so hostile. It's like the judge said, I mean, there's... You know, there's places that we can meet, but yet, as a council, we still don't have the ability to work together, properly research things, and come up with a solution. Instead, it's just exactly what the judge said. He's right, he's wrong, and that's the bottom line. And so I hope one day that we'll be able to get beyond that, but unfortunately, it's not tonight. That's it.
Congratulations, Harvey and Don. The whole point is, with this rip... Number one ordinance... I believe it's good. I mean, but the whole thing is, I'm not an attorney. I don't want to put anything in that we look like a fool, what we've done before, find out that we couldn't do it, and then we had to take it off. So I agree. We need to research, make sure everything is right when we do these ordinances. So it's passed on the second. We'll wait for the third and hope that we get an answer to solve these problems. And thank you once again, council, for the vote of confidence for this coming.
Several things. First of all, I'm very impressed with Michael Jennings. Did he leave?
Homework.
Well, I just wanted to tell him, thank you very much. You should be very proud of him, I would be. He presented himself very well. He was very prepared with everything, and that's a huge accomplishment. Yes, I think we should all go support Mark Parker and the girls' basketball team. He's worked very hard, and the girls have worked very hard. I want to thank Joe Griffin for his time with the RDC and everything that he's accomplished in the time that he's been on it. And I wanted to congratulate Mr. Belner and Mr. Webb for their appointments on that. And thank you for some good back and forth, and with what we're trying to do, this resolution number one. And I think it's a healthy thing. We just need to get to the bottom of it and find out who's... Who has the most...
Who?
Correct? Correct background of it. That's it. Thanks for coming, for everybody that came.
I didn't really leave me anything to say. Again, congratulations to the new RDC members. Thank you, Joe, for your services. Again, it's an unfortunate thing, in my opinion, that because of rules, you can't just sit down and have a conversation between reason... Because we have to have this form and all these rules, you know? Because we all have the basic understanding and intent to do the right thing for the city. No one wants to do anything that's bad for Beech Grove, and that's why we're here. And whether the label of Republican, Democrat, and all that shouldn't even be in play, it's a matter of what's right for the city, and we can have, you know, a civil discourse on it. But by virtue of, you know, quorums and rules and Congress and this and that, we have to do it all out here, and it looks ugly sometimes, and I apologize for that. So that's all I want to say. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
All right. Thank you. Counselors, before you leave, in front of you, you should have a red packet. That is a great deal of information pursuant to stormwater management. And I ask that you study this and ask and call if you have questions. The city established a stormwater utility back in 2006, and we haven't moved it forward from that day forward, and this city has several major drainage problems. So what we are going to do at the next meeting, we are going to hold a public hearing, and we're going to receive testimony from people who have stormwater issues. And then I'm going to ask you to move on a couple of ordinances to move our stormwater utility forward. Over the next week or so, you'll be receiving some information pursuant to that, and so we can give you as much time as possible. But I planned on introducing that at the next meeting. Now, Counselor Davidson, I'll be willing to work with you on the animal ordinance and the other one. But this is something that we need to do, and it's something that the city should have done a long time ago. That's all right, but it should be our intent to fix our stormwater issues. And so we will move on that at the next meeting. So when you're willing to... Are you... You can call Wesler or whoever that's in your thing. And I apologize for putting this letter in your packet that should have went in your red packet, so please accept my apology for that. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
We are adjourned. We will meet on March the 3rd. 8:19.